Welcome you all to our business meeting tonight. We are going to begin the meeting with the pledge to the flag.
Susan.
Susan Holbeck is going to do our pledge. Thank you, Susan.
(laughter) (inaudible) 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 (laughter)
Thank you, everyone. Next on our agenda, we have several recognitions to present. The first, Leanne will be reading for Chrissann Breed, who is unable to be with us tonight. Followed by that, Becky will read the one for Susan Holbeck. Dr. Susan Holbeck. And then Susan will read the last one. Or is it Aleah Blatner? Okay, great. Leanne.
In honor of more than 38 years of dedication in the children of the Beaverton School District, Chrissann Breed is being awarded the Flag of Learning and Liberty, which symbolizes the fundamental interdependency of public education and the democratic way of life enjoyed in the United States of America. Chrissann began her career in 1979 as an intervention teacher and has continued as a special education teacher, child development specialist, counseling psychologists and psychologists in several elementary schools in the district, including Cooper Mountain, Cedar Mill, El Monica, Findley, and Boce Elementary Schools. Chrissann also worked with Bridges Academy as a home instructor. Chrissann has spent her career dedicated to helping every kid she encounters. She loves the most complicated cases and never gives up until success is reached. She loves to research and doesn't leave any stone unturned. Chrissann believes in going to extreme measures to meet the needs of the most difficult. Her magic weapon is her pet snake she uses to build strong, trusting relationships with the students. She has a keen sense of humor that only adds to her likability, states Kathleen Skidmore, principal at Findley Elementary School. Chrissann is a fierce advocate for students, particularly when it comes to inclusive practices. She often sees potential in students before it's recognized by others, and students meet those high expectations. Chrissann brings creative ideas to the table when teachers feel they have exhausted their bag of tricks. She will be missed by our home instruction team here at Bridges, but I'm excited she will have the opportunity to enjoy her well-deserved retirement. She does so much to make the world a better place outside of work. I'm confident she'll stay plenty busy. Congratulations, Chrissann, says administrator for Bridges Academy, Ashley Hudson. Chrissann's only focus was the student she was working with at that time. She worked so hard to get to the root of a student's difficulty or disability, and she will be missed, says Lenore Johansson, Assistant Director of Special Education. The Flag of Liberty and Learning has become an important reminder to all communities that education serves as a driving force in advancing freedom and liberty in our democratic society. Congratulations, Chrissann.
We expect excellence. The Sigma Xi Columbia Willamette Outstanding Teacher Award to Dr. Susan Holbeck. Dr. Holbeck was recently awarded the Sigma Xi Columbia Willamette Outstanding Teacher Award. Susan is being awarded this honor for her tireless work in supporting and engaging in science, research, and education in the Beaverton School District. Susan's contributions include reviewing and advising students on their research projects, training and supporting teachers to engage in the same work with their students, development of the Summa Science Research Program, convening the district's SRC and IRVs to review students' science research, participation in district science review committee reviewing science research projects coming into the district, writing grants to support science fairs in the Beaverton School District as a developing partnership to support this work, coordinating and running three science fairs a year for students, and coordinating special awards at the Northwest Science Expo. Sigma Xi Columbia Willamette is a science research honor society. They engage the Portland, Oregon scientific and technology community to enhance the health of the scientific research enterprises, provide opportunities for the next generation of scientists and engineers, and promote the public's understanding of science and technology. They are comprised of faculty and students from several colleges and universities in the Portland area, as well as colleagues in local businesses, industries, federal and state agencies, and medical centers. Congratulations, Susan.
(applause)
I would like to thank you for this award, but really, the work of supporting students in science belongs to the teachers in the classroom. It's hard work, but Beaverton has a reputation in the state and in the country for our science research programs, so thank you very much.
We expect excellence. 2018 NCTE Achievement Award in Writing, Aleah Blatner. Aleah Blatner, a senior at Southridge High School, has been selected for a 2018 Achievement Award in Writing, given by the National Council of Teachers of English, NCTE. The NCTE Achievement Awards in Writing is a school-based writing program established in 1957 to encourage high school students to write and to recognize some of the best student writers in the nation. Only students who are juniors may participate. Schools in all 50 states, the District of Columbia, Canada, American schools abroad, and the Virgin Islands are eligible to nominate students for the writing program. Aleah received a Certificate of Superior Writing and has also been selected to attend the prestigious Kenyon Writing Program this summer. This year, schools nominated 462 students. Of that number, 227 received Certificates of Superior Writing and 235 received Certificates of Nomination. Each student submitted two pieces of writing. Two independent judges scored each submission on expression of ideas, language use, and unique perspective and voice. Congratulations, Aleah, and good luck in all your future endeavors.
(applause)
First, thank you for recognizing me. That's very kind of you. Secondly, the ability to have nominated me could have been here today, so I just wanted to take a moment to thank her. She was so amazing and supportive throughout the process of entering, and I wouldn't have been able to participate, let alone be successful in the competition without her support. So, thank you. Ms. Natalie Ballard.
(applause)
This is one time I need to be her boss and tell her what to do. She tells me where I should be. So... Not right now, I have vice chair's permission. So, just want to say how much, on behalf of the school board, the staff here, and probably most of all the kids, we appreciate you being school board chair. And for those of you, being a school board member is a tough thing anyway, and they spend a lot of time, but when you do go into the leadership, as some of you know who've been in that situation, it's kind of your life. It ends up being your life because of the responsibility of all of the kids, all of the staff. And Anne is one of the most organized people that I know. I feel that in these last two years, I probably might know you better than my wife. And maybe that you could say that for your husband, too. He's spent a lot of time on the phone together, and just want to let you know that you've made a difference and really appreciate you.
Thank you. It's particularly funny because I really don't... I've hardly ever used a gavel because I don't like it. It will always remind me how much it hurts. Thank you. On to real business. Thank you for letting us recognize you. You're welcome to stay as long or short as you would like. We are not offended. Board members, are there any cases that people would like to propose to be done?
Yes, I would just like to group the bond accountability report with the 2014 Capital Construction Bond Program Reserve Allocation Report. I'd like those two to be together. Do you want them in the beginning of the program or at the end of the program? I just want them together.
So, the reason that they are separate is because one is a report and one is something that is proposed that we take action on.
But it's mentioned in the report. I thought it was mentioned, the allocation reserve had mentioned the report.
Carla, are the same people here both times?
Brian is doing...
The report.
The report. Paul and I are doing.
Because Brian is not here, I feel hesitant. I'm happy to take a note on that, and Becky's going to be, or our next board chair is going to be so awesome at managing all of these types of things. What I'd like to do, Donna, if it's okay with you, is I'm going to take a note with the report, and when we get to that section of the agenda, ask Brian if he's okay to move it to the action. I don't have time.
That's okay.
Okay, thank you. Let me take mine off. I'm open to that. Was there anything else? Okay. Terrific. Then, next on our agenda is a public comment. The board welcomes your comment, and we would encourage you, if you would like to address this, that you please complete a yellow card and give it to our recording secretary, Candace Hye. Tonight, I do not have very many cards, so I'll be allowing three minutes per card. And board members typically do not respond the night of the meeting, but either a member of staff or board members will respond within the week. And with that, I'd like to invite Sarah Schmidt, and then followed by Lynn Muji.
Good evening, Chair Brian, members of the board. I'd like to continue my comments from last month when I shared some of the success stories from our early release collaboration time. Last month, I shared some of the stories of things that were happening at the elementary level, and tonight I have some stories from the secondary level. And I just wanted to, I think I said this last month, but reading through some of these things that our teachers and other staff members have been doing is incredibly inspiring and pretty much exactly what we had hoped for when we designed this schedule. We know that the Beaverton School District hires all of the best educators, and when we're giving them this extra time, I think they have completely risen to the occasion. They're doing things like implementing our curriculum adoptions, increasing student engagement, integrating technology into their teaching practices, and so on. So here are a few more specific examples. There was a team at Southridge High School that worked at reading and writing integration across curriculum areas. So, they worked on introducing reading strategies with teachers of other subjects than English, than ELA. And they got to share the wealth of all the PD that their English teachers have been getting from the district and sharing that with their colleagues. One of the things they worked on with their science teachers was using reading strategies with their teachers. They noticed that their students were more willing to use vocabulary, and they were feeling more comfortable with scientific terminology, using the same strategies that they use in their literature. They noticed an increase in test scores, and those science teachers were hearing their students, starting to ask, "What's the lens we should be reading this article with?", which is something that they would be using in their ELA classes. And they're incorporating really great reading strategies all on their own. The Sunset High School Computer Science and Engineering Department has used collaboration time to help teachers use some of the tools that are available to enhance their classrooms. They used virtual reality to do a VR tour of Google Earth in Spanish. They did laser-cut DNA models in biology, and electrical circuitry in physics. They said that the Spanish students really loved the VR activity. It was a lot of fun, and they helped them learn some of the vocabulary words they would use for traveling. The biology class is using a prototype of the DNA model, and they're getting some feedback for changes and upgrades. And the students in physics have said that the physical circuitry helps enhance the theory into the introduction of their physics class. Pretty cool stuff. The Aloha High School CTE teachers were using their collaboration time to set up and train on a new maker space, the computer lab and video production equipment. They also were using best practices to teach student professionalism for when they go into those careers, plan cross-program projects, and on CTE student recruitment into their programs. They were saying that with the introduction of all our new CTE programs, they've seen an increase in student engagement, and the collaboration time has allowed them to develop cross-program projects, and they've had some ninth period in school field trips to visit those CTE classrooms, and they're hoping that that's going to increase graduation rates by having more people access the classroom. One more. ISB has a learning team that's working on Theory of Knowledge, which is part of the IB curriculum, and Avid integration, and putting those two programs together. So since they are a full IB diploma high school with an Avid program, their schedule requires them to do the junior part of IB Theory of Knowledge and have an Avid course. So they've been using their Wednesday early release collaboration time to examine the Avid curriculum and the Theory of Knowledge curriculum and find out where the overlap is and how they can make that more accessible for their students. And they said the byproduct for their students is all of their Theory of Knowledge classes are more scaffolded for their juniors at ISB. So I have many more examples if you guys want to look at that. I know I'm out of time, but I just wanted to acknowledge all the great work that our teachers have been doing, our staff has been doing with that collaboration time. Thank you.
Thanks, Sarah. And then Scott.
Hello. Hi. I want to thank the school board very much and the whole district and the schools and the students for another fantastic year of safety to school. We have made some fantastic gains. Last year, I was only able to report that one school dropped their driving rate to school down. This year, I haven't done all schools, but I have at least nine schools that have had successes, and that they've increased their walk and bike rate and decreased their drive alone rate, so it's really quite exciting. But thank you very much for your support. I'd also like to thank the Safe路toSchool team. We do meet monthly, and we do take a look at how to devise ways to make it much safer for kids to walk and bike to school. And sorry, not just walk and bike, but all modes, and how do we get our kids to school so they can learn safely. And our team is at public safety, transportation facilities, the city, the county, THPRD, and others, and we do have a lot of people who are very concerned that to make sure kids get to school being healthy, but also so they get to school so they can learn. So thanks to them. I do want to report to deliverables that we just completed action plans for both Cedar Mill and Kineman Elementary Schools. Kineman Elementary School's been working really hard to look at how do they get the kids across Kineman safely? And we've done a lot of work with Washington County, and I do believe before school goes in, and they thought school didn't go until September, but it is a little bit early, but they really think it's called an RRFB, Rapid Flashing Beacon, will be put in on Kineman to get the kids across safely. At Cedar Mill, you may have also heard, they're doing a big development along Cornell, where they will have sidewalks, bike lanes, center turn lanes, so kids could walk to school a lot better, but also people can get to the school a lot easier and a lot safer. So, thank you. I also like to thank the crossing guards. Crossing guards throughout the district, I've been providing a wonderful service and wonderful help to all of our kids, getting them to school safely, and usually with a smile on their face, even the eye. So, want to thank all the crossing guards. We are collecting the data, everything from 10 kids to 150 kids that are crossing every single day, so I really want to thank them. But definitely wanted to thank Washington County installing pylons at Findley Elementary School to separate the traffic on, I can't remember my words, the main road. And the Salzman, yes, turning in. But also the RFB they're putting in at Kineman School, they're also looking at one on Lady Law and 174th, as well as the added side blocks. So, I want to thank our partners, both the city and the county, and thank you for all your help.
Thank you. Thank you, Ben. Scott and Jason. Oh, together. Excellent.
Good evening. Good to see everyone. Guess what we're here to talk about? Policy, Jason. We saw the proposed provisions, and are here to basically talk about it, or at least talk about it, because it is written here, and we're hoping for some significant provisions. This thing that you'll all remember, except Tom. Tom did hear the oral history, it's told by Scott and I, before he ran, and he still takes our calls, which is nice. And taking back on our adventure from a couple of years ago and looking at this, two things jumped out that I'm concerned about in terms of proposed policy. One, we had a problem with a lack of transparency throughout the process. Things happening outside of what was a public process that had significant influence on that public process. I understand the need, the desire of the board to decide, and that is in the board's under their power to decide whether this can be a committee or not. Question is whether there's a committee, and especially when there's not a committee, how do you provide that increased transparency? I don't have a great answer for you, but I would love to see something in here to ensure there's greater transparency before. The other thing is around, the language around the specific factors included here. I see a reduced number of factors compared to the old policy, and most importantly, the language changed subtly, but very significantly from "for" to "to pretend", "shall", "consider", and now it's "these factors may include". It's now optional. Before, it was requirement, which in the context of a legal argument, gave the community a recourse to say, "Here's what must have occurred. This has to occur, and we have a legitimate right if it hasn't. If it's 'may', there is a recourse." Think about it just more generally. Think of every conversation you had with us, with any group about the boundary. It either started with a community member saying, "Hey, we've read the policy. We don't understand the recommendation based on that." Some of our neighbors built a tool that did exactly that, but it had to start with factors that had to be there that we could then measure and try and report on. If it's all optional, if it's not there, it's very difficult to have any sort of a conversation. Now, let me be clear about one thing. I have every confidence in the aid of you that if you executed this policy today to set up a boundary process, you've got the leeway to make very sensible decisions that would come out in a much better shape than the last you did, or should we can't count on all of you being here, Dr. with lottery in the moment. The rest of you can realize that this is a volunteer job, and you don't have to actually listen to us, and not be paid to listen to this nonsense. And it ultimately comes down to, we need to have the rule of law, not the rule of people, not the rule of men and women. I think we need to have specific factors that we can count on these answers. It should be "shall", and I would have no problem, Tom and I were talking earlier, if you set the objectives for the boundary. There's some language here saying that those factors might need adjustment, might need definition, because those definitions, goodness knows, can change over time. But I feel very strongly we need those in here to avoid this mess. I think what Jason said is very appropriate. I'd like to kind of add to that based on the experience that we had from the last boundary adjustment, or the high school boundary adjustment. You know, the way this policy is proposed, if you're intending to vote on this tonight, I'm encouraging you to vote no and consider and make changes to approve this policy. The first part of this really talks about, you know, when the superintendent, you know, "may" propose a boundary adjustment, and when you get down to it, all those factors come down to some kind of change in something in the community, either a change in population, you know, if the district got bigger, a school needs to be shut down. And I think with that, there should be a requirement for an enrollment study by a third-party expert. What we had happen in this last one was no enrollment study was done by an expert. It was done by staff. The community, you know, looked at the numbers and couldn't believe that these enrollment projections that were set for 2020 just didn't look right. We made that known six months before the first vote. We kept being told by the staff that, "No, no, you're wrong. We came to you with that information." And the response was, "Well, we're hearing it from you, we're hearing it from staff. We have to kind of believe staff. We can't really just believe a community member." And then it turns out that a month before the second vote, the staff admitted that they had been including auction students to the tune of 1,400 students, meaning they had overcounted in their enrollment projection, 1,400 students. But then they tried to cover it up by saying, "Oh, but we always intended for that to have a buffer." But not once in the previous six months had they ever said that to us, so I kind of don't believe that. I think the other one is that when Superintendent Grady, you know, finally did do one, and this was none of his fault, but when he did do an enrollment study, it came out that the enrollment numbers that they were using for 2020 would not be hit till 2035. That's pretty important information. I mean, a high school was built that $75 million over budget in a location that's probably the wrong location for this time, and we're not going to hit the numbers that was used in the projections for another 15 years. So I think that any change should include a requirement for an enrollment study, at least come to this process with real facts. I think, you know, including, you know, touching on a topic that Jason discussed, it's this other, the criteria to be used. The board recognizes that there are multiple factors to consider in satisfying the objectives of a boundary adjustment. In some cases, some factors may outweigh others. Those factors may include in no particular priority, and they list four of them. Jason's concern is that they don't say "shall", and I think that's an appropriate concern because now it's open-ended. But I think another concern that I have is that they just say "may". It may include these, but it suggests that it may not include other factors. So I can see in the future, maybe 10 years from now, someone saying, "You know, I can consider student body composition. I don't have to consider any of those others because I don't have to say 'shall', but I can't consider transportation costs." So I can make this wonky, you know, student body composition-oriented map that has transportation costs out the window, and I can't consider that. And that's what that language suggests. So I would consider language to improve upon that if you're insisting on going with some of this. In the end, if the board finds that the superintendent's proposal meets the board-approved objectives and reasonably considers the relevant factors in public input, so the relevant factors are no longer "shall" but "may", the board shall approve the proposed boundary adjustment. I think at the end of the day, we need to change that. A number of board members expressed feeling like their hands were cut, you know, that the staff had come out and said, "We met that, we checked that, we checked that, we checked that." And certain board members, even at the vote, were thinking, "I don't want to vote for this map. It doesn't pass the eyeball test, but I've got this language that says if they check the box, I shall consider this." And I think at the end of the day, you as a board represent the community and are kind of the last step in this process. So if a map is proposed regardless of what has been done, and you look at this map and it just doesn't look right, you should have the right to say no. You shouldn't be able to say no and not be handcuffed and say, "Ah, but the language says 'shall'." And I, you know, that's what your job is as the board. Their job is to get the numbers right and the facts right and make reasonable, you know, proposals based on the factors that you set forth, but if at the end of the day you look at this as wrong, you shouldn't be handcuffed by a piece of paper that you can change. You know, the last piece of paper that handcuffed you was done 15, 20 years before, you know, your time maybe? This is not your, this is not your policy, so please consider that. Thank you.
Thank you.
(applause)
But if at the end of the day, you look at this, it's wrong. You shouldn't be handcuffed by a piece of paper that you can change. You know, the last piece of paper that handcuffed you was done 15, 20 years before, you know, your time, maybe? This is not your, this is not your policy. So please consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. Those are all the other cards I have tonight. Is there anyone else who wanted to address the Board? All right. I'm trying to turn the time over to Superintendent Grady.
I will be real quick. Been to, and other staff, senior staff, to graduations. And I think our graduations, it went up without a hitch. And I really want to thank Stephen Langford there. We were able to livestream all of our graduations. I just got, received numerous emails from people not living in the district, and they couldn't go, but they were happy to be able to pull that up. The other ceremony that I went to along with Board Member Larson, it was truly a treat for me, was the Aging Out Ceremony. And we were able to watch 28 of our most challenging students. So these are students who have went through our schools, and they've reached the age of 21, and they're in a transition program. And they are aging out. And I also, some of our most resilient students. And if you have never been to an Aging Out Ceremony, it is really special to watch those students, and especially the parents, and just a real tribute to our teachers who teach these staff. I think it was more difficult for the staff than it was for the parents and students, because the staff have really taken on those students and really become attached to them. So that was, that was just wonderful. As Sarah indicated, today I was fortunate. I just, I said it's probably the best day I've had all year. I was able to be at Westview with a high school group for about two hours, and invited up there by a teacher. Went to Barnes, spent about an hour with a, hour and a half with a third-grade classroom. Then I went to Fergrove to their fifth-grade graduation. And that was, that was exciting. Just not to make anybody feel too old, but those third graders will graduate in 2027 from our high schools, and those fifth graders will graduate in 2025. And what's kind of neat is it's a theme. You go in there, and those third graders know when they're going to graduate from high school. And they're already talking about college and what they want to do as the fifth graders. Also, was able to attend a meeting, a parent, a special education parent advisory group meeting with Danielle Petson. And it was really neat to listen to some of our parents who have formed this advisory committee and talking about the great things that happened for their kids within our school district, but also talking about some of the challenges that they're facing, and some of their worries for their students and going there. So that's a, that's a parent group that meets periodically, and they're really trying to advocate for those students. The other thing that we're going through here at the district office is what we call a zero-based budgeting. I know we're going to finally pass next year's budget, but we're already looking at the next year of the first biennium and looking at some of the challenges that we're going to have. And want to thank Claire and her entire group, as well as cabinet members, some of our principals, that we're really starting to dive in and look at our budgets from top to bottom and to make sure that we're getting the right return on investment as we look at a very challenging next biennium. And I just want to, it's just, Jason kind of reminded me, and I just don't want to, I know it's over, and Becky probably says, phew, it's over, but just cannot say enough about the people who were involved in our local option levy, our bargaining unit members, our principals. Jason, you were there, team members, Becky, the Board, and everybody. It's making such a big difference. And I can't imagine going into this next budget year looking at having to reduce 300 additional teachers. I just can't imagine that. So thank everybody. Also, you know, we went through our budgeting process, and the word's kind of getting out there about our transparency. So we're going to be having a meeting with the Governor's Office, and they want to talk about how we do our budgeting, how we prioritize, how we look at return on investment for students, how do we look at things through an equity lens. So that meeting's going to be coming up as we, as we get back home. So anyway, you know, 40,000 students and about 5,000 employees. I think it's been a good year. We went through some difficult issues, but overall, I think there's good things happening in our schools every day. So thank you.
Thank you very much. I agree. There's a lot of good things going on, and we are getting ready to hear about those things in a couple of our schools. First, I'd like to invite the Jacob Wismer team, Joan and Tracy. Who you've got with you? Oh, sorry. I read it wrong. It was Tracy.
It was.
Good evening. I'm Joan Fadning. I'm the principal at Jacob Wismer Elementary School. I believe it is my ninth year there and 11th year in the Beaverton School District. And this is Erica Heslin. She is not new to the district, but she's new to Jacob Wismer. She and Tracy did a swap from Kinnaman. And she's going to be talking to you about that a little bit later. When I was asked to look at the statistics and our successes with S-Back, I thought back to 2014, 15, when we switched over from the regular Oakes test to S-Back. And we were very concerned, because we knew S-Back was going to be a lot more rigorous. And we anticipated that our test force would drop significantly. And they didn't. And they've maintained relatively the same as when we did the Oakes test and the, and the S-Back. And so this weekend, I went way back, and I dug a little bit just to show you what a typical third-grade Oakes-ELA question would look like. And I have three examples. This is third-grade reading. What happens last in the story? Your poor choice, baby C or D. Where does monkey live? And this is after they read a passage. And what was the elephant supposed to get for supper? So that's Oakes. Totally multiple choice. Then you go to S-Back, and this is a, these are some samples in comparison. Choose the sentence that best describes what the information in the paragraph shows about the author's point of view. Another one. Which two sentences from the passage best support your answer in Part A? Not one, but two. So I had, our students had to get used to not just picking one, but picking two much harder. And then, a student is writing a report about how to build a treehouse. Which source would most likely have information for the report? So they're looking at Beaverton schools as well. So you can see how much more rigorous the S-Back is. And in 2015, after the kids took the first S-Back test, I decided I was taking a class. So my project was to do a survey after the kids took the S-Back to see how they felt about it. And one of the questions was, for math, how many questions asked you things that you have not learned in school? And 322 students, 94% said none or a few. And then for English Language Arts, how many questions asked you about things you have not learned in school? And 90% or 353 students said none or a few. And so it kind of shows that our students were prepared for the test. Also, though, it was like, some of the answers were, we want to go back to Oakes. So kids will be kids. So I feel that that is our success for these statistics at Jacob Wismer. And as far as our challenges go, we, we have a very diverse, wonderful student body. 24 different languages. Children coming in from all over the world for maybe two to five years. Wonderful experience for them. They get to learn English. We get to learn about their culture. But I did notice, looking at the statistics, that they did not perform as well as our total student body population. 77% to 90% still did very well. But that is the area that we're focusing on. And Erica's going to talk about our action plan.
So as Joan mentioned earlier, I was transferred. Tracy and I swapped. I came from Kinnaman, where I had been for 11 years as an ELD teacher before I was, got my administrative position. So coming to Jacob Wismer, it was really exciting to see the diversity in the population there, and a very different population. But one of the things that we've been talking about, and that Joan had even been talking about prior to me coming to Jacob Wismer, was moving towards a more inclusive practice, where the students wouldn't need to be pulled out for their language services. And at Kinnaman, we had been doing that for 10-plus years, just dabbling it, knowing, knowing in our heart that it's probably better for children and trying to make it work. And then when Toshiko took the multi, now multilingual department, she's been researching it and gathering information. Now, we, Jacob Wismer would be one of only nine elementary schools out of 34 doing a strictly pull-out model for their ELD students. So I'm really excited to jump into working through the co-teaching model, the collaborative co-teaching model, starting the conversations about how it can work instead of why it won't work. It's a difficult change for adults, but it's clearly fitting. It makes the experience for kids much, much better. So we're committed to doing it. In this, which, part of the urgency to do this, that I've noticed the different kinds of ELD students that they have at Jacob Wismer. At Kinnaman, we rarely have ever had a true newcomer new to the country, especially in the third and fifth grade. At Jacob Wismer, they come and they come off, and there are many. Kids who come from a country where they have experience and literacy in their first language, success in school in their first language, and then they get dropped into the school system here, English only, and they become very frustrated. Not due to just language and can't communicate, but the cultural norms and the differences there. And they're little. They're, they're just children. So they start to act out. And we have difficult behaviors, because they, they lose it. And they get, they get really unsure of what to do and how to navigate those emotions. As comes the Culture of Care. We're Group C, and so next year, we get our Student Success Coach. We've already started planning with the Student Success Coach. And I think a lot of the strategies that we're going to be implementing under Culture of Care are really going to benefit these students that were, our language learners that are struggling. The last thing in our, our action plan is, it came out of a question from our, one of our parents that translates the newsletter into Japanese for our Japanese community. And he, there was a misunderstanding about our Japathon. And we weren't having any success in getting it solved. So we said, well, John said, well, why don't you just have them come in? We'll meet with them. And it was wonderful. And so we started meeting with them monthly. And if they had a question that they wanted, a topic they wanted us to address, we would bring in people that knew about that. One time, it was our ELD teachers about summer resources for the kids. Another time, it was our counselor on some of the lessons she was teaching in the classroom. So it really has become a two-way street as well in that they gave us some resources about Japan on the go, which is a group of people that come in for free and do this magnificent lesson with, in the classroom with the kids about Japan and Japanese culture. So if, we're hoping to expand that to other languages as we have a need, but we're definitely going to be continuing the meeting of our Japanese parents next year.
That's all done. Board members are going to ask questions now.
Well, it sounds like a great experience. So I guess my question is, obviously, you're bringing experience from Kinnaman to Jacob Wismer. So what are you bringing back to Kinnaman? I'm sure that you're learning different things there about how it's outsized at Jacob. Sorry.
Just the opposite. I went from Kinnaman to Jacob Wismer.
Oh, Kinnaman, Jacob Wismer. Okay. Yeah, I know. But I said, aren't you going back to Kinnaman? No. All right. So you're just doing a, it's a permanent swap? I just thought it was a super swap.
Not that she knows it.
Not that, not that anybody has told me yet.
Okay. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I can kind of think about these things being, you know, a super English term. Sorry.
Field trip.
Yeah, field trip. For a year, and kind of re-experience.
I'm just, I'm starting to get my feet on the ground.
Okay. All right. Sorry. It's quite a question.
We have a couple of comments and a couple of questions. Comments on, I really appreciate you reading both the Oakes test questions and the S-Back questions, because not very often I get to hear especially the S-Back questions. And I think it's so important, you know, to get grounded that way. So I really appreciate that. And I also have a question. You're, you timed your presentation, same time the ELD folks are coming, talking about the new curriculum. So you kind of like advertised early for them. So thank you for that.
My question is actually about the statistics here. And I just noticed that the English language learners, there's only one year of statistics. There's not anything in 2014. I'm not missing something. 2014, 15, or 2016, 17. I was just wondering why we just see one year of statistics for the English language.
It's on, it's not on this report, but if you look at past reports, it's on there as well. It's on the other reports. I don't know why it didn't show up on this report.
If the cohort in that given grade is not large enough, which is, I think, about 20 kids, then they won't show up. So it's by grade level, not by school, but for privacy.
I just get the vibe it was 25%. But that depends on the year, is that right?
For ELD?
Yeah.
We normally have 90 to 100 students schooled by, kayed by.
Oh, so it depends. I understand it's by grades, not by, okay. I'm having a dumb moment. Okay. Okay. Thank you.
I got one question over here. It looked like your fifth-grade growth rates, both for English and math, have kind of dipped down for the last couple of years. I mean, obviously, you have like really high scores coming in and high scores throughout, but I mean, it's taken from A to even higher A. Is there anything going on there? Are you not pushing, challenging folks, or what's going on?
I think the test is very challenging. I think our scores, some of our kids score really high. So to maintain that, it's, it's kind of difficult. Though we're still, I think, in all the categories on growth, above 50%. So we're pleased with, with that.
About like 80%.
Yeah, Becky. And then Leanne.
I have to, I think this is the first time I have seen on one of these reports zero students missing class versus suspension or expulsions or days missed. I think it's the first report I've seen doing that. But you mentioned you have students that have frustrations, because English is not their first language, and they've been used to being successful in another language. Can you tell me, you don't, you don't have a Culture of Care yet. That's going to start next year. Can you tell me what techniques you've used that, that your students, that you seem to have zero students that have had to be, that's, that's great?
We haven't suspended in several years. And I think we have a very strong counselor. There's a lot of, with this Culture of Care and these students, there's a lot of separation anxiety, especially in the younger ones. And so we advise, you know, we tell the parents beforehand, it might be difficult, but drop them at the door, and if we need your help, we'll call you. And so I have sat on the floor outside the kindergarten classroom trying to console a child. And then after the next day, it gets a little easier and a little easier. And then they're in, and they start learning the language, and they become accustomed to the culture. And we learned from Toshiko, we've had some kids that have really blown out. The last thing you want to do is send them home. And they run, and they hide. And Toshiko said, let's let go of the academic pressures right now, and let's just make them feel welcome. And that's part of the Culture of Care philosophy, is kids have to feel trusted and cared for before they can learn. And so that's really been a priority. And so we are starting with the Culture of Care next year. We're Group C. But it's not like we haven't used a lot of the practices, you know?
Coming new to the staff this year, that's one thing that I did notice, that they, they already have the thought and the belief that in elementary school, the kids are doing the best they can. And so that when they're behaving like that, or when you see those behaviors, there's a reason why, that you need to look for first, and it's not because they're bad. So that was a really nice, nice thing to get, to join that staff and already have that in place.
Thank you so much for the report. My question is a follow-up on early release and kind of of what Sarah was sharing in the opening comments. How, if we were to go to the staff and ask them, what do you think about early release? What would they tell you? And what have they, how have they been using their early release on Wednesday?
They would tell you that they absolutely love the time, because I asked them. And they're trying to actually get me, ask me to give my first Wednesday. It might have been the straight-up directive one. They want even that much more time. And so we, we do a lot of things. Each team does things differently. But what I have seen Each team does things differently, but what I have seen are, a lot of our staff are giving PDs, and I see teachers from other buildings coming into our school, and I see them going out to other schools to visit other teams, other grade-level teams. I see them going out to PDs, at the district office. So I see a lot of learning taking place, but what I also see is the collaboration that's going on with curriculum and with assessment. If you go in to the grade level, you can see same lessons basically happening across grade level, and they're checking each other, and they have the time now to collaborate and know what's best. And so I just think it's been tremendously successful, and I won't give up my first Wednesday, because we have a lot of training to do.
I'm curious, Anna, actually, I was really excited to hear about Jacob Wismar moving to the push-in, and I was just wondering what you could describe for us as a core about how you're helping to ease that transition, what are you doing to try to make it so people will be successful last year, that's such a culture change for you guys to take on.
It is. I really support this, and it's because our Japanese, mostly our Asian parents have asked us, well, you've considered this model. We've seen it in other schools. I've also been sitting in classrooms observing a teacher and seeing kids get up to leave during just the heart of something, or they come back and they just miss, you know, a tremendous lesson. And so having Erica here with her ELD background has been wonderful, and so she has these ideas, she has the contacts, resources, she's done it at Kinnaman, so now's the time to do it, so I'm going to let her talk about it.
So as far as what we're, how we're supporting, I think getting the word out or notifying the staff that this is what we're thinking of, we're not ready, there's no master plan set in stone right now, and I don't know that there will be, because we have to figure out what works, but just letting them have the summer to mill it over, but just telling them that the most important thing is that we're committed to their needs, that it's going to be rocky, it's going to be difficult, but regardless of what the barriers are, we're going to address them, we're going to talk about them, and we're going to do a lot of team building, we're going to have a lot of conversations about how to work with each other, adult to adult, because they're all fabulous at working with kids, but sometimes that adult-to-adult can be difficult. And a lot of reassurance that as long as they speak up and talk to us and communicate with us, we will continue to address their needs and figure out what's for everybody, not just some people. That's so far.
Yeah, Erica has just had them go on a field trip to another school to look at their model. We're asking them, we're asking Toshiko, so we're getting things in order, but we know that this time of year is not the time to really push it. There's a lot of stress right now with the last few days of school, and so we're trying to reassure them, it's okay, we're going to start out slow, it's going to be according to your comfort level, because we need them to be on board with this. And so, you know, we're going to make mistakes, we'll take a different turn, they're giving us ideas about what we can do, we're giving them reading material if they want over the summer, so we're trying to make it as comfortable for them as possible. And I told one teacher, I said, if I were you, I'd go, hallelujah, I get to work for the classroom teacher. So we've got some people really supportive, but I think our ELD teachers are a little worried to go into the classrooms, so we're just trying to reassure everybody now.
A lot of the reluctance really is just out of not having the information, and they don't have time to read the books and to get up to speed on the variety of different ways it can look, and that the important piece is really the planning piece, and we're committed to using some of our admin-directed time to have them plan together, make sure that you're matching, you're starting with the content standards and then matching the health standards that go with it, so that they all know and are on the same page. And then as far as what it looks like in the classroom, so when you go to C- co-teaching, you're really seeing only the tip of the iceberg. The planning piece, the underlying piece that you don't really see in the classroom often, is probably the most important. So time, I think that's the one thing we're most committed to, is time for team building and relationship building between the adults, and then time for them to collaborate and work with each other on instruction.
The one thing I noticed when I came up and met with Erica and Joan is, we look on here and see a lot of percentages. When you walk into that school, not only the administration, but every teacher knows what that percentage, that percentage of student, that's a student face, so they can actually tell you where each and every child is in relationship to their progress in mathematics or language or any other subject area. They absolutely know where every student is. Joan's, I don't know, she should go out and sell it, but she's kind of, and it's taken a lot of work, but developed her own tracking system for students, and it's unbelievable.
It is, it's really nice. You go to one Google Doc tabs by grade level, every kid's on there, we can see just at a glance who has allergies, who, you know, who's his counselor, who has speech, I mean, and then kind of just in general, you know, are they a little bit below meeting in math? So we can just look at it and see where that kid is at at a glance. So we've come to really fall back on that. That's our go-to document now, and it's really, you know, I like doing things like that, so it's always been my summer project, and now we're going to have a school-based link, so that when you click on the link to the kid, it goes right to their Earl chart, so you know exactly where they're at. So I know, I get really excited about that, and I'm working with my intervention teacher to make it happen, so.
I just have a quick question. How many ELD teachers do you have?
How many ELD teachers? We only have two and a half. We'd like more.
So if you're thinking about pushing in, that this may be difficult without the students you have.
It's true, but if we are thinking of the newcomers will be pulled out, we think that that's appropriate. The other kids, we're going to be assigning by grade level, and they're going to one teacher on two teams, and they're going to be planning together with the teams, and we're going to create time for them to do that. So the planning is what's really important, then checking in on the students and working with the teacher, maybe teaching a lesson, maybe having centers, so it's kind of working with teams, so one teacher to two teams, and then I think our halftime is going to be working with 5th grade, where we don't have as many students at that grade.
And to ask all the classroom teachers is that they have to be kind of aligned in their planning for whether it's reading or writing, whether that teacher is pushing in, or they have to be aligned, so that person's planning for two grade levels rather than 11, 12 people, teachers.
So I wanted to piggyback on something the superintendent said, which is, the other thing I noticed about Jacob Wismar is that not only are they on top of the results for students, but that when you go in there, it also has this incredibly warm feeling. It is unique to me that they both have managed so well, that people feel welcome, that they've gone so far out of their way to make people from other countries feel welcome when they come to school, and that you feel part of that community, that, I don't know if you still have them, all the volunteer badges are out, ready to go, I mean, it is a unique thing, so I, don't go enough, because I'd probably spend too much time, and that'd be really bothersome, but I appreciate the work that you do.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Joan. And then we want to welcome Shirley Brock from Five Oaks. We're so glad you're here.
I think that's exhausting. Absolutely exhausting. So I am Shirley Brock, and I have been, just finished in my 13th year at Five Oaks, three of those as a VP, and then the last, I don't know, 10, nine as principal. So I, it's always hard for me to look at data, because our kids really struggle, and our teachers work very hard, and the thing that we're the most proud about is that it's not really shown here, but our kids have really made a lot of growth, especially our ELL kids and our specialized kids in the areas of math and reading. And I think part of that has to do with teachers working together and collaborating. I also believe that our writers workshop and reading workshop are making all the difference also in the classroom. So we're challenged by that. We're also challenged by, as you can see, that 60%, of our kids miss 10 or more days of school. And, you know, I wonder about that all the time, and we work on that all the time. We go to homes, we pick kids up, we wake the kids up, parents call us all the time asking for help to get their kids to school, and it's a real struggle. And part of it is, may be related to the fact that there are kids that can see Mountain View, and they kind of have to come to Five Oaks, they have to ride a bus for 45 minutes because the attendance areas have been so strange. And so we, Matt Peterson and I have worked for the last few years trying to get kids, even though they're in the Five Oaks area, especially if the parent doesn't drive, if there's no way of transportation other than a parent walking, and we're not on a bus line at Five Oaks either, so even getting there, a parent can't take mass transport there. So that's, I think that's one of the things that gets in trouble, because it gets us in trouble, because middle school kids, let's be honest, they don't get up in the morning, and so we have to do a lot of work around that, and empowering families, empowering parents, which is one of the reasons that we really love working with our social worker. And our social worker has made a huge difference providing resources for families. And then recently, we just started in April, from the multilingual center, we have an African-American liaison specializing in small family, so that we have another liaison to work with our families, just like we have our Hispanic liaison that works with our families. And I think those people outside of our certified staff really make a difference with our kids and with our families, because they feel welcome. And I'll be honest, that we've just started getting at families coming back to school because they feel safe. They didn't feel safe for quite a while, they weren't sure whether INS was going to come in, they weren't sure whether there was going to be any kind of issues around that, and so families are starting to come back, and we're trying to be as welcoming as we possibly can. And so whenever we do any kind of event, there's lots of phone calls that are made home by those people, they speak the language for them, so that we can make sure that they are all there. We are also, we had 115 new enrollments this year after the first day of school. We also had 119 withdrawals during the course of the school year. We have 54 homeless families. We have currently 61 active ELL, 161 ELL students. We have 66 kids that are on monitor, first-year monitoring, and we have 20 kids that are on year two of monitoring. So we have a wide, very wide range of kids that are receiving ESL services. We also get lots of refugee kids, whose parents, their parents have never been to school, they've never been to school, so the whole business at school is really difficult for them. So one of the things that we really thought about is what can we do to provide more interventions for kids, and with teachers that they're familiar with? And so we've made some changes with our schedule for next year, so teachers will be doing it every other day, either an intervention or an enrichment or a Core Plus. And we met our last, the first Wednesday in June, we rolled out the schedule, we let teachers know, they all kind of knew about it, and I was amazed, I had them work by grade levels, and they, as grade levels, made some decisions about what interventions their students need. So there is going to be some math intervention at the 8th grade, where all, all nine teachers will be doing an intervention in math, even if they teach humanities. So they're all going to learn together, we're all going to make sure that those kids have a strong foundation, because at the 8th grade level, they're all going to go to AGS1. The 6th grade have decided that what they want to do is they want to teach kids how to be a middle schooler. They're going to help them with AVID strategies and organization and all of those pieces, and digital citizenship. Those kids are going to have a Chromebook, a one-to-one Chromebook for the very first time. We've had some issues this year around appropriate use of Chromebooks, and so we thought this, we'll do digital citizenship across all three grade levels, but we thought this would be a perfect opportunity. We are also going to start working, Mountain View, Aloha High School, and Five Oaks are going to start working with the teacher development group in math. Aloha has found tremendous progress with their kids in math, and so we're going to work with them, and we're going to work on those transitions between middle school and high school. We really feel like that's what we need to do, we need to make sure that everybody's all in, that it's all consistent, doesn't matter which math teacher you have, it doesn't matter if you're at Mountain View or Five Oaks. 70% of our kids are going to go to Aloha, so we are really feeling like we need to be all in. We have a strong AVID program, and we're feeling like those school-wide strategies are starting to make a difference. We are seeing kids being more and more organized, we're seeing kids doing critical thinking. I have three incredible AVID teachers, so I don't have to worry about those classrooms. I think I've told, I've told several board members that, so where I'm really concentrating on is school-wide. One of the things that we found is that tutorials are the strongest part of the AVID program, in that kids own their learning, they identify their point of confusion, and so AVID has created collaborative study groups, so that's what we're going to start doing school-wide. And so our pre-service, that's part of the pre-service training that we're going to do, so that kids start to earn, own their own learning in the classroom, and teachers wanted to learn the whole tutorial process, where kids are, kids do questioning and they learn from one another, and so that's another thing that we're going to be doing. We also did a whole process about why are we here? We did a whole visioning this year too, and so they, the staff came up with our vision, or at Five Oaks, we inspire, nurture, and educate. And so that's what they wanted their tagline to be, that's what we're going to be looking at as we start renovation, and what are the things that we can have printed up on the walls and painted up on the walls. So speaking of renovation, so we're starting our renovation the day after school gets out. Teachers have been packing, they've been purging for two years, they've been packing this whole year, all the cornballs are going away, about, probably about a third of the teachers are packing up their rooms because they have to move to a different room. There are six phases to this construction project. We are going to be construction sites, starting as soon as kids get out of school, they'll start, they'll start hammering, and I don't know, they just said that's when it gets really noisy, they'll be working during the day also, they'll all be partitioned off, but the renovation is starting. Rachel Carson is moving to Timberland for the year, so that's another thing, and so some of the teachers from Five Oaks will be going up to Timberland to do PE encore up there, so we're in a big state of flux, stress is high, but I think we're going to be fine. I think people are super excited that our kids are going to get a school that they're going to be really, really proud of, because right now, it doesn't look that great, you can hear things from one room to another, so everybody's very excited about the fact that we're actually going to have a beautiful school, so. And I want to thank everybody here, because you're a part of the reason that's happening, so thank you.
Thank you, Shirley. Donna?
Hello, Shirley, how are you doing?
I'm good.
Well, I guess I have like a number of questions. I just wanted to know what sort of strategies you're employing to sort of keep kids more in school, because I've noticed there's been consistent high levels of kids missing school because of suspension and expulsions, so I don't know how you're addressing that.
So we are doing restorative practices, and we, it's really, it really starts in the classroom, and so we started to work on that this year, we've changed things about how we do suspensions. You should see a drop in this year's, in this year's statistics from, because last year, we were really alarmed. We had, we've gone up and down, and so we really worked on it. Did I say that?
Shut one of them on. These both are on.
All right. So we are, so we worked on that this year, and we set it up where we had, our student manager worked on a lot of restorative practices. Kim Hox had come over from Hot Estorba, she had been the student manager there, and now she's at Five Oaks as a VP. now she's at Five Oaks as a VP. And so, she helped us set up a program. So we should see a significant drop in that number.
Okay, then I guess, I was also, I know you were talking about all the new students coming in, how you had over 100, unanticipated. There's a high mobility rate and lots of students coming in from different countries. So that might be part of the reason. But I know that the parents reporting that they feel informed and valued as active partners in their child education has gone down for quite a bit. It's now 66%. It's sort of has been in the mid 70s. So I just, how is, what are you doing to sort of address that issue or is it just because you have all these new kids coming in?
No, it's really about combining parents with the technology and the way to do that. And again, so we have Canvas now and we have ParentView. We found that we didn't have that many parents that went into ParentView. And so, we've done a lot of teaching around that. We also were able to get a lot of hotspots and, because we have a lot of families that don't have wireless. So we were able to provide that for a lot of families. We did do some family nights where they can come in and use the computers. We're going to continue to do that and maybe even a little bit more. We're trying to figure out that piece so that parents that don't have technology at home can, can access it here at, at Five Oaks. But also, they, a lot of them, if they, they could use their phone, but they really didn't have a computer at home. And so, now with kids having Chromebooks, parents can actually use their Chromebooks to get on and look at Canvas and look at ParentView on their Chromebook, which is helpful.
I have one final question. I hope you don't think I'm picking on you. I think you're wonderful. Because I've asked you all these tough questions. So the last one has to do with teachers and staff reporting they contribute to school decision-making. Now, of course, I don't know how many teachers voted, submitted their survey, but it's down to like, it's been 50, 62 and it's 53%. So I'm not sure how you can address that.
So what we did was, we really used our early release to address that really specifically because we didn't have opportunities to do decision-making. I'm going to be really honest with you. My teachers were so hard. And so, time is really limited during the school day. And I'm, I'm not going to lie, they're exhausted at the end of the day. So trying to bring people, groups of people together has been really difficult. So that early release was really helpful because that's when we did the really hard work around what is our why? Why are we here? What do we, what do we want to accomplish with kids? What do we want our, our schedule to look like? What are the things that we find are most important? But we finally had a way to be able to do that on a consistent basis. I wish I had more than one early release a month. That was my control. But that being said, I really believe that teachers are using it really, really efficiently and effectively. But I think that that, I'm hoping that that looks better for next year. When I looked at, when I looked at the TELS survey, it had gone up this, this year because we were had, we finally had a way to be able to do that. And you know, and middle schools get out at 10 to 4. It's really late in the day and we also try to do a lot of after-school activities. So those teachers that stay, they stay with kids and not with other adults. So they're either planning for the next day or they're working with students.
Well, thank you very, very much.
Yeah Susan?
So thank you for coming. I know it's, it's hard, you know, the day before the last day of school, so thank you for coming here today. So my question is about your Avid kids. I don't know how many kids you have in Avid, but I'm curious what the numbers we're seeing with testing. This may be a John Bridges question, but I know how you've implemented that at your school. Do you have a vibe for those kids that are in the Avid classes and how they're doing on Sback and?
Yes, I do. And Shou can speak up. I know she's back there looking at her own stuff. So we did a, we looked at Avid data and we looked at how Avid kids did as compared to other kids. Avid kids did better. And I think that has to do with the fact that their learning strategies, their learning in that Avid program. I have three really strong teachers. So we really saw that they were able to use the things that they learned in Avid, which is why it's so important. If you only have one class at each grade level, and I don't have enough staffing to do more than that currently, it's really important that we make sure that all kids give those strategies. And so, that's what we're working on. But we saw that our Avid kids did better, did better in school as far as, as far as grades and their, their test scores. But we also saw that as they went to high school, they were doing better, which is what we want, what we want. Because that's where it's credit laden. And so, we want to make sure those kids are doing well. And so, we're seeing that those Avid kids are doing, doing better. And part of that is their own personal advocacy. Those are the kids that you select. Those are that middle range of kids that comes to school all the time, that is a C student. And so, they already have something that we just build on. And now, it's our job, those kids that don't have that, that we find a way to build as in them also.
I love that. But I would also be kind of curious to see the demographics of those kids and where they are in terms of their percentages of growth. So I mean, I don't know, but I mean, it'd just be nice to see that.
Well, we are, our kids are, really, our advocacy is very diverse. And we have a number of ESL kids that are in Avid also. So we, we make sure of that.
Yeah Liam?
Hi there.
Hi.
Before I ask my question, it's about math. I just want to say that I have a soft spot in my heart for Five Oaks. My kids all went there. And sometimes you look at scores and you think, it doesn't really reflect what's going on in the school. I wrote down a couple of things while you were talking. Five Oaks has such a rich culture. It's got a diverse community that I loved, that my kids got exposed to that variety. They have staff that really, really care about their kids. And I just think that good things are happening there, even if the scores look as they do. So thank you for all that you do and for your persistence in being there year after year. But my question is, you talked a little bit about the teachers' collaboration in maybe being one of the reasons that the math scores have gone up. What else, is there anything else that comes to mind that maybe has contributed to that as well?
I just think that the teachers are extremely committed to these students and relationships come first. And I think people go out of their way to help kids. I see teachers after school all the time helping kids. I see teachers at lunchtime every day helping kids. And I, it never stops. And they bend over backwards. And that's Rachel Carson at Five Oaks. I, I just really believe that these people are committed and we have, people don't leave. People don't go to a different school. And I think that's not about me, that's about those kids. It's about the commitment that they have towards those children. I, I absolutely believe that. And, and there are, I'm not going to say that there are people in my office crying because they're frustrated and discouraged. And, and when our test scores come out, it's discouraging. It's really hard when people work that hard all the time and their kids, they feel like they, they've missed something, they haven't done something. And I, and I say that if, if it wasn't for them, maybe the scores would even be lower than they currently are. But I know that everybody gives 110% the entire time that they're there. And they are exhausted at the end of the school year and they still choose to come back.
Yeah Tom?
Hi.
Hi.
I really appreciate the effort that you have here to ensure that all students are receiving a well-rounded education, specifically the zero period that you instituted.
Yep.
And you talked about how that made a difference for students. I was wondering if you could elaborate a little bit more about what that difference was and what the impact on those students' lives are.
So we have a schedule where you, kids got PE and Encore. And so, if, and it was everyday PE and everyday Encore. And what happened was if you were a student that had special ed services or you had ESL services or you had Avid services or, in an Avid class, you lost one of those. You lost PE or you lost Encore. And so, we started the zero period and the numbers dwindled, I'll be honest. But I looked at those kids that are still in there that have been consistent and their grades either stayed steady with additional classes or went up. So that was a really good sign. But it also told us that, you know, there are kids that they, they are working so hard all day long, there's no joy for them. They don't get PE. They don't get Encore because they're needing special services in both special ed and ESL or, and then there were kids that were great candidates for Avid, but if they took Avid, then they didn't get an Encore class. And so, this way, by changing our schedule, by actually teachers teaching more than they have in the past, they have less planned time during the day, we are hoping that all kids get a little bit of everything and so that they do have a more well-rounded day during the day.
Thank you.
Shirley, I have kind of a philosophical question for you. So you could choose to not answer, but it's, as a board, we have, we've, I'm sure you're aware, we've changed the format of school, well, actually, the format for school reports has changed. And we are looking more closely at achievement data and including growth data. And I'm really curious, I will say Five Oaks' growth data looks pretty much in line with the whole rest of the district. And as people looking at this carefully, I'm, and Eric sort of alluded to this question for Jacob Whitmer, my question is slightly different, which is, what do you, what do you think our goal should be? As a district, we're about 50% of kids are hitting our growth data. Is that like something we should be looking at or are we like, oh, it's a power trip? And if you want to get back to me on that, that's okay. But this is a question as a board member I've really been struggling with.
I, I think, I think Sback data is really limited. I will be honest with you. And I think that sometimes we place too much value and weight in it. And, and kids, I think they need to take it seriously and so, we're looking at ways that they will take it more seriously. But the news, Sback is hard and long. And kids literally lose the will to live while they're taking this test. I mean, it's really hard. It's hours long. And I, and I think it's really hard for kids and I, and I think we're going to get, they'll get better at it as we get better, having them do more performance kind of tasks in the classroom. We, of course, you know, you're not going to get the, like Oaks, the click, 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 undone 15 minutes later. But I, kids literally have anxiety. I've seen crying. I've seen teachers crying because they, you can't help them. It's, I think it's really hard. I think we need to look at what, what kids are producing in class. I think we need to take a look at what do they have, what do you, what is the writing that you're seeing that? Because if you looked at my writing samples from the beginning of a unit study to the end, from the beginning of the year, you would be amazed. And these are kids that don't speak English very well. I mean, those are the things you should be looking at. And that's hard to look at because you can't, it's not a number. You can't have a number to that. And so, I, I don't know, and my principals are going to kill me, but if we just had a group of principals saying, these are the things that we look at, this is how we see growth in students, and how do we look at this? Because I will tell you, this date, this Oaks and Sback, it doesn't matter, this is incredibly discouraging to my teachers, incredibly so. And then, you know, you look at another school and their scores are really high and the kids are scoring so high that any, you don't see any growth because there's nowhere for it to go. And so, I, I think that it's time for the district to take a look at what kids are doing in the classroom. And looking at what are they doing, how are they getting into college? I mean, when you start to look at those pieces and those soft skills that kids need to have also, and the critical thinking, those are the things we need to be looking at. That's just me. Probably not a pop story. That's who I am.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. And I know it seems like we just barely started this meeting, but board members have been here since 4:00, 4:30. So I'm going to call a break, I'm sorry. And then we will start back up at 8:05.
The zero-based budgeting process, we heard from Don earlier. We're in full screen. We've been working since April. We have a diverse group of staff working together. Principals, teaching administrators, operational managers. And we're reviewing, we're all being very transparent with all of our budgets, very detailed and going through and reviewing and understanding each other's budgets. We, we'll get through the budgets by the end of June and then we'll continue our work in August and bring a draft to the August board work session of what we'd like to move forward in the October, November community process in, in the fall. So we'll come see you in August and then again in October.
There are questions for Claire? Thank you, we appreciate it. Okay, and then next up, we have a team who's here to present about attendance guidelines.
In front of you in the packet, you should have the data that we shared with you in February. And if you remember from that school board report, we were really frustrated with our numbers in attendance. So at that time Superintendent Grodding charged a team to work on some consistency across the district on attendance guidelines. So what you have with you is the data that says we need to really make sure that our kids are coming to school. And as you heard from the two school reports, we know that it really is, needs to be an emphasis in Beaverton and we want to make sure that that's happening. With the data that you have seen, the first one shows the district data on 10 or more school days. And that's the district guidelines and that's our goal here in Beaverton. The other one that looks like this, this is about what the state reports and it's no more than 10%. We have a higher bar and so, it definitely is the missing 10 or more school days. So me, I have with me today our team. Shou has led a group to work on how do we, how do we help this issue? And how do we make sure all of our principals in our schools are aware that we need to make this a number one priority? So Shou's going to introduce her team and also talk a little bit about what they have accomplished.
Well, good evening, board members and Superintendent Grodding. It was, it's just a great pleasure to be here tonight. And as Ginny said, I had the pleasure of assigning principals and assistant principals to work with me on developing attendance guidelines. And I've been away from the building level far too long, 10-plus years. So who am I to even come up with procedures and processes? I'm like, I just asked my friends and said, hey, can you help me out with this? Because these are people who work every day to develop systems to make sure that our students are here on a regular basis. So what we worked on last year was we, we asked the question of, so what's really getting in the way of our students being here on a regular basis? So just like any good educators would do, we just asked a question and all of them conducted their own research. Some of them did home visits, some of them did focus groups, some of them talked to students individually. And found out, so again, what are the reasons why students aren't here on a regular basis? So again, it was around research. And this year, we got together, quite a better times. What are you thinking about? So what would it really look like if we had a K through 12 system or more of a framework for us to be able to address this issue around chronic absenteeism? And based on our learning, what became really important for all of us is that whatever the guidelines we provide will be, one, something that can be used by all of our building leaders. Because again, it needs to be user-friendly. It needs to be a process where we can share information. We have so many buildings, so many students. So instead of Crandall coming up with its own system and Tina coming up with her own and David goes, wait, what are you guys doing? We decided to create a living document where we can share resources. So here's a letter that we sent. Here's a- Here's some of the check-in, check-out systems we're developing, so let's not reinvent the wheel. So that the guidelines are, again, designed to be a framework where we can share resources, specifically by levels, so that we can continue to learn from each other as to what we're doing to improve students for coming to school on a regular basis. And what we learned is that the importance of relationship building. Both Joan and Shirley talked about how important it is for all of us to be able to build relationships. Because if we don't know our students, if we don't know why they aren't coming to school, then we really can't talk about appropriate interventions that really meet their needs. We realize that there is no such thing as one-size-fits-all intervention for all students. There's a variety of reasons as to why students aren't coming on a regular basis. So we want to make sure that interventions are, again, addressing the needs of our students. So three things that we said that we need to be consistent, K, all the way through 12. One is that we need to have a team at a building level. And all of our schools already have a team, a support team, that address issues around behaviors or attendance or academics or a combination of all three issues. So it's not necessarily creating yet another team at a building level, but making sure that every building has a team, a team that consists of initiators, counselors, teachers, sometimes we may have to involve community liaison, but again, making sure that we have a team, we have multiple set of eyes looking at data, really understanding, again, why kids aren't coming to school. And another piece that needs to be consistent is the use of data. So not just looking at numbers, but also asking students, so what's going on? What can we do? So using both qualitative and quantitative data to make sure that we know what needs to be done to support our students. And the third component, but the guidelines should be around, looking at multi-tiered system of support. Here's another fancy educational jargon here. Essentially, what I mean by multi-tiered system of support is that, one, at the universal level, we really have that consistent language as a whole school, that we really have to push the importance of attendance. So what are you doing at Assembly? What kind of communication are you sending to parents on a regular basis? Like, for example, when you walk into Bethany Elementary School on the front door, you see a picture that says, today's attendance for you is percentage. Our goal is 96%. So again, there's a ways in which the schools are communicating on a regular basis the importance of attendance, right? And also, we need to provide early interventions, again, based on the needs of our students. If your kiddo is sick, then we need to kind of figure out, so what, are you going to the doctors? Are you getting support you need? Or if the student is, say, for example, being, not feeling really comfortable at school, then we need to think about, so what can we do to make sure that the students are ready to support they need at the classroom level, school level? And also at the tier three level, that we do need to provide individualized, really intense, more of a wraparound service for our students. So those are the three components that we think are really important and need to be consistent. So what I have asked my colleagues here is for them to talk about, so what are some of the challenges and also successes as around addressing issues on attendance at their building level? So I'm going to ask Rachel Crandall, who is about to be stepping in as a senior at McCrory College and 10th Number School.
Hi. So at, I guess I'll start with challenges. At the elementary level, 99.9% of the work that we're doing is working with adults, working with parents, and the parents are the people we're engaged with because of the attendance issues. So there are some challenges there. And you know, other challenges we have is, our process is that the first contact comes from the classroom. The farther you get away from the classroom, the less trust there is, and the less personal connection there is. And so our first contact, when there is an attendance issue, is coming from a classroom teacher, and it's a call of concern. Student has been absent for a certain number of days. I'm just checking in because I'm concerned about that. And then it kind of goes up from there into counseling, and then into a counseling office, and then into my office. And as things get progressive, the stakes get a little bit higher. So some of the challenges, I guess, would be, you know, having a consistent, consistent trigger for calling. And in terms of, you know, the number of days and when the call is made, and having that consistent in that building of A D staff members. Also, there are often very legitimate reasons why people are absent. And so on a spreadsheet, you may see a certain number of absences, and that student may be in round three of Lice this year. And it's hit the whole family. And so, or if you were looking at my data, in the top 20, in the top 20 people, 20 students with absences, six of them are in my independent skills classroom. So they have a variety of medical challenges, so they're medically fragile. So there are legitimate reasons why people are absent and why they would have them and why they wouldn't, and often that is the reason for a call or not a call. I haven't called on this particular family because I know that they're in round three of having Lice this month, that they are going through a lot. So those are some of the challenges. I think some of the success is that, is that when we start with the classroom teacher, you're able to maintain the relationship between the school and the family. When you start with a truancy officer, you can't have any, the relationship is kind of severed at that point. And, you know, I think what we see typically is that as students, as we get to know the students more, we get to know the families more, their attendance improves. The district data kind of shows that. When they come out of kindergarten, as they progress through elementary school, our attendance is better.
So hi, I'm Tina Myers. I'm assistant principal at Woodford Middle School. This is my second year at Woodford. Before that, I was at Meadow Park for two years, and taught at Meadow Park, taught ESL at the high school level as well. So I will start by saying that at the middle school level, attendance is kind of the thorn in our side. As you saw by the data, that's when the dip starts to happen in middle school. But we also know, you know, like our district goal, we want to support success in life, well showing up is part of success in life. So we are working on teaching that. Most of our students with chronic attendance problems basically comes down to three areas I think of. We have social-emotional, so sometimes that's bullying, sometimes that's trauma. I think of the social welfare issues, so they might be babysitting for their siblings. They might be helping their parents interpret for appointments. And then we have mental health issues, which I feel has been on the rise lately, depression, anxiety. So at Woodford this year, we had a goal to address attendance. There's one number that was, I think, about, our attendance was 78% last year. We were horrified by that. So as an administrative team, we took that on as our goal. Our goal is 93%. We have had a rise. Where one data point I saw was, was 89.9%. I really don't think it's quite that high, but I don't think we're going to meet our goal. But we definitely have increased. We have an attendance team. We meet about, we try to meet every week, but the reality of that with various crises that come up is we meet consistently once a month. We had some life happens things. When we talk about relationships, we had a counselor change. We had our attendance secretary got a job out of the district, who, she was the keeper of our data, and she knew the family, she'd been at the school for years. So the last couple of months have been a bit of a challenge. What we have learned is interventions need to be individualized. Like I said, we have three kind of areas generally that the barriers are brimmed into. And so our interventions have to be individualized. We have a student attendance interview that our counselors do, it's a five-page interview where they try to talk, they talk to the student about, you know, what is the, what are the barriers? And they come down to those antecedents. Okay. They don't have an alarm clock, parents leave early. All right, we're going to buy you an alarm clock. Your buddy's going to call you, you know, or text you in the morning. So as I said, it is the thorn in our side. Sometimes resources, personnel can be an issue. Our social worker kept, was kept very busy, and often she was helping find families a life skills person to kind of help the family with, what is, what should your morning routine look like? What does your nighttime routine look like? To help you be successful in showing up. And I do believe that these guidelines are a great framework that we can use, that all schools can use to address the varied barriers and reasons for students not attending right now. Thank you.
Oh, and the last spot here at the high school level, it's, I want to begin by saying it's been a pleasure working with this team, as well as other principals who have it, who cannot be here this evening. Attendance is tough. It is really tough. It is the gift that keeps on giving. Every day, we have conversations around attendance, and our attendance is not good. And, excuse my maladies, we're bad today. And our attendance is, I think, impacted by three things. First of all, the social-emotional side of our students is rearing its head to a level that is impacting double digits of students on a daily basis. If it's anxiety, if it's depression, if it is trauma, if it is school avoidance. But that social-emotional piece is real, we feel it. All the high school principals talk about it and how we can work together to solve the dilemma. And it is there. The second challenge we have at high school level, especially the senior year, is work. Quick story, one of our math teachers received an email on Friday from one of his students, and this email said, to teacher, teacher X, I can't come take my final today because my dad is taking me, taking him, taking me to work with him, and he won't let me come take my final. And the teacher emailed the admin team and said, what do we do? And the response that we all said was, we need to think about this because we're living in a different world now than we lived 10 years ago. And so how can we support the student? How can we support the family? And what is the role of that final? What is the role of grades? But if work and supporting a family is the most important to a student, we need to align that. And that directly impacts the level of work. And the third challenge we have is our systems are outdated. Our systems of recording attendance, of looking attendance, of intervening for attendance, you know, our traditional models, and our students come from very complex backgrounds. And so how can we evolve and improve our practice over time is going to be important. Successes at Southridge. First success, we have a team, just like Woodford does. We meet every other week. The team includes the SRO, social worker, counselors, administrators, attendance, TOSA. We invested a point two attendance person this year, and a teacher. The teacher usually changes every meeting. And we mean talk about attendance, we talk about student behavior, we talk about academics. To be honest, I don't know how much headwind we make when we talk about kids every two weeks. But our work is more focused with home visits and moving forward, and so we think the success is building a conversation in the system to help students. The early warning system at the secondary level has been wonderful. It is a very, very, very good tool that we can use to support gathering data quickly. We can use to analyze data, we can use it to triangulate information and really dig deep into what is causing some of these attendance issues. And the third piece of success is that, is the relationship piece. Avid has been great. A quick data point, ninth grade data from last year compared to this year. So Southridge High School students, current sophomores that were at Southridge last year compared to current freshmen who are at Southridge this year. Last year, we had a 51% attendance rate, at 94% attendance or higher. This year, our Avid students are 71%. So we're seeing a big increase there as a focus on relationship building. I want to leave with a quick little synopsis here of a focus group conversation. This year in my evaluation, I met with 150 students, and I broke the students out in different demographics based upon their definers. Two groups I met with separately, one group of students were two or more house, and one group of students that had poor attendance, so below 75% attendance. And I asked the students several questions. Both groups came back and said, it's not the school that is causing, it's not the school, it's the barriers that's happening around the school that's not causing, that's not allowing us to be successful. Work, family need, illness, and a lack of an opportunity to get to school, just that drive to get to school, which I found really interesting. The last question I asked all of the focus groups was rating Southridge on a scale of one to 10, one being we are the worst school on the face of the earth, and we can't even call ourselves that, versus 10, we are the best school on the face of the earth, five being we're doing our job, but we're average. Both of these groups scored us the highest of any of the demographics. It was interesting to me, and it tells me that there's some work we can do around attendance, about building relationships, connecting with kids, following these guidelines, using data, and then that multi-tiered system of support will really help dig in to get these kids to school.
I just want to end by saying that we are, we are refining this process and we are refining these guidelines. One of the things that's really important to us as a district is to make sure that we're consistent across all schools. And with that, there will be training in the fall, in August, and possibly September for all our administrators in attendance guidelines, to make sure that we all are having teams of teachers and principals working on these, that we're having a consistent process with data, that everyone across the district is using data, and finally, that we have a process in place to know what the next steps are for the multi-tiered system of support, and know that we're all providing interventions that are important for our kids.
Do they have questions? Yes, Susan.
It's an emotional one because I personally have been going through a mental health issue with my child this year, but it's been going on for a long time, and I cannot tell you how much I appreciate what you guys have done to get it going. I wish I could say that I had my child in school this year, I didn't. But I know that you work really hard, and I'm hopeful that with the systems that you have in place, that my child will be attending Southridge, at least part-time next year. Thank you.
I had a question, just because I so appreciated the work and Ginny, the commitment to standardize across the district. From the report, it was hard for me to understand what was new, what's current practice, how different we are between schools. So I just was wondering if you could give a quick broad brush to those sorts of questions.
Well, I can answer that from the high school level. We're not standardized at this point. I think all six of us approach the question of attendance very differently. I think guidelines will allow us to have common conversations, common expectations. But I think most importantly, it will allow us to set benchmarks consistently across the district. What those benchmarks are, I don't know. But right now, when we enter the attendance conversation at the high school level, I can't speak for middle school, but probably pretty similar, we all have different entry points, and that's really hard to have a conversation. So this system will help us.
I just know, I guess, antidotally, I hear from students that say, you know, CTE programs, after-school programs are really one big indicator of them making it to school, that without those, those programs, you probably wouldn't see them there. And I know that you didn't really touch upon that, David, but I don't know if this is also part of the trying, the attraction of trying to get kids to come to school every day as well, and what are you doing regarding those issues? I know we have this big CTE push, but the extracurriculars too, and banned and all that stuff.
The data behind CTE does show that historically underperforming or achieving students do better in school with programs. In the work at the high school level around CTE, the common conversation we have is how can we provide these enriching opportunities? Beginning the conversation in eighth grade, moving through grade 13 or moving post-high school. So at the 11 and 12 grades, when the students are getting their work experiences, where they're digging deep in that career exploration, they have a path that's behind them, and they have a vision that's before them. We know that will help. The other work with CTE that is important to bring up here is that CTE also has to be embedded in the culture of the building. So how can we make sure that we're enhancing that culture and then providing opportunities? So what systems in the district can we do, can we employ to push kids in CT pathways? And at the same time, support, maintain, build, and foster cultures that allow students to be successful? And students that historically haven't accessed those programs, how can we work on that? Like health courses, for example, how can we get students How can we get students into the health careers program that historically hasn't, not have an access to?
In addition to CTE and other programs, we are really pushing this idea of every student needs to be seen and heard and known. And that happens at the classroom level. And that's why we are so working hard to push the culturally relevant teaching practices because the number-one tenet of culturally relevant teaching is about knowing their students and building relationships across all differences. So, again, when students feel like they are cared for, they're valued, and they're known, then it's more likely that they are going to be here with us. So, we are pushing, again, at classroom level, number-one intervention, which is to make sure the students do know their teachers and they feel cared for. So.
I just, guys, have one follow-up. I believe, and I don't want to put Michael on the spot, but I believe that you were working with Matt, who was at Mountain View, sort of linkage, link up the after-school programs between the elementary school and middle school as another way to keep kids in school. So, I don't know if that's going to be broadened, if it's going on in other parts of the district I'm not aware of. But could you talk about that?
Yeah, we, that was, that was something that we were working on. You know, unfortunately, some of the changes in our average school opportunities kind of collapsed a little bit. But one of the things that, that I think really does need to be improved is the communication between schools. So, for instance, we have a student that is in the top 20. And that student is not going to be with us next year. He's going to go to another elementary school. And we are at the stage in our process where we're going, we're going towards truancy. And that new school should not start over at zero. And it is often the case that students will come to us from other schools and other districts, and there isn't really a clear reporting. And we try and give the download on that when kids are forecasting for middle schools and things like that. But I do think, especially at a school like Kidman, where 100% of our students are going to one school, if they're not going to an option program, it's a clear view pattern all the way to K-12, that that communication really does need to be better. And I think that's the, that's the piece about these guidelines not being set in somewhat lockstep, like if this, then this. Because for that particular student, my message to the new school is going to be, you know, really at like two, two absences, you need to kind of intervene. Whereas if it was most other students, we wouldn't necessarily be intervening after two absences per se.
Yeah, I'd like to add on to that. At the Southridge level in our region, I have the luxury of building a system with a new boundary with 40% of our students being new and creating something where our community is part of the school. And I would take dual language as an example because I think we've done this really well. Working with VOS, working with Whitford, working with Southridge to do some alignment so that in the five, six level, there's some transition. Just on Friday, our dual-language leadership group went down to Whitford to meet with incoming dual-language students to talk about transition, to talk about getting involved in activities, to talk about sticking out, sticking with the program, to talk about how do you access ID classes when you become juniors? And that alignment is really important. We're also doing the same thing with our revitalization grants. So, the CTE work that we're doing with engineering reaching down to Whitford, Heinlein, and Conestoga so that those eighth graders have access to engineering explorations as an eighth grader coming into summer. So, that 8.5 summer school program. And the more we can communicate, articulate in these programs, the better we're going to create these systems to support. So, it doesn't seem like it's a foreign territory when students choose, or when students move to a new level. And so, dual language for us has been very successful. And if we can replicate that in the CTE, I think we're going to be moving that on.
I want to thank you very much. David, in your comments, I was really grateful to hear you mention benchmarks and that that was maybe the next step for us to be taking. It's super important for us to get aligned between buildings, both vertically and horizontally. And so, I want to encourage you to keep up the work because we know we need our kids in school. Thank you very much. Okay, next on our agenda, we have a special request for the Bond Accountability Committee report to go in concert with the action item later in the agenda. And Brian, you're okay with that? Thank you very much for being willing to do that. So, then next on our agenda, we have a report from Sue Robertson on our district procedures for investigating sexual conduct and sexual harassment complaints.
It's one of our favorite topics, I'm sure. So, before I open it up to you for questions, I just have a couple of comments. First, I don't think it's probably a surprise to anyone. This past year, we have seen quite a spike in complaints, not all sexual harassment ones, but just in general complaints, probably system-wide. I think the other school districts are noticing the same things. So, I just want to give you a couple of caveats. One, sexual harassment complaints and basically complaints of any sort are seldom just clear from the outset. There's always something unique about it, something that you didn't know when you went into it, something that wasn't stated in the initial dialogue that you had. And that's why it is so important to make sure that you do do a thorough investigation and that you do go those extra steps and interview all of the potential witnesses and go beyond just what the complainant may say to make sure that you have a thorough picture of what's happened. And then those complaints tend to evolve over time. As you get more information, there's just more out there and more considerations. And they're seldom just clean, with just a clean, clear answer. They're just not black and white. Not all investigations, I know I noted in there that we have hired some outside independent investigators, but our, our administrators are considered independent investigators unless the complaint is about them. And typically, we can use them as investigators. But sometimes, things become a bit more complicated and it makes more sense. And it may be determined by at what level in the complaint process you're at, where it makes sense to hire somebody from the outside. I will state, though, that that is something that is, you know, it's a resource issue as well with something like that. So, but not all investigations warrant an outside investigator. You just have to weigh each one individually. Some are simpler than others. Some are lighter complaints that are easily resolved by restoring relationships, having some of those conversations between the complainant and the person that's being accused in some of that. And then finally, I would just say that one of the things that we're doing, and this hasn't gone, it'll go before cabinet tomorrow, but we are developing additional guidelines for our teachers around boundaries that we will put in the Code of Conduct for 2018, 2019. We're developing some poster-type of materials as well for our administrators that talk about what are some of those gray areas? What's, what's considered appropriate? What's considered inappropriate? And I would say in today's environment, really, touch of any sort is you touch at your own risk. What we would advise our employees is to not do that. But we give them some examples in this and talking about kind of those appropriate and inappropriate areas. So, with that, I'll open it to you.
Other questions, Donna?
So, with, I know with what you just provided with us today, will there be any like administrative regulations going? I know it's not with this, or I know some additional guidance. I'm just trying to think of like the timing of the notification to the person filing the complaint. You know, how the privacy of that person, how that going to be maintained and measures to? I guess that's about it.
So, I guess, Donna, is the question, there are ARs. There's an AR that goes with CB and JBA.
Yeah.
And so, you're wondering if there's going to be an update to that?
Yeah, something like that. And then if that's. By sort of information.
And then also an update to JHFF?
Yes.
Or there is no AR for that? So, curious about that.
Thank you.
That's correct. So, as far as updates, I think a lot of it is just making sure that we follow what's there. It's the most critical piece. And there will be, there's some judgment pieces that go in that. No matter what you add to an AR, there will still be those unique circumstances where, oh, it really, really would be better if you went this direction. You put too much into it, too specific, it may not fit the situation, and then you're locked in with that too. But a lot of this is about judgment and good judgment and communication with our employees and with our community and our students.
Are there other questions?
Yeah, Becky.
I see what the, I'm guessing, as an HR person, the difficulty in having a policy like this is that it's where one's rights begins and ends and the other's rights begin and end. And we have employees who have rights and are, have due process and an authority. And we have a staff-to-staff person accused. That's, that's one way. And I'm sure that's a little bit clearer in the HR. But when we have a staff-to-student allowing that due process, do you believe in your HR expertise that our policies are of best practices to protect those that are the most vulnerable?
So, I believe our, our policies are good. And I think they are, I would say, best practice in that. I would say sometimes our complaint procedures muddy the waters quite a bit in some of that. So, you know, at what level does a complaint go forward and then become a decision of independent decision-makers out there that may not have been involved in the interviews or those conversations, those processes out there? You just, you risk upending the apple cart. That's just, that's my personal opinion on that, since you asked.
I had a question. And you'd think I would have had these memorized by now because we have been, in fact, this policy was just enacted in May. But there is a part that talks about annual training. And then I was curious to see, it mentions district employees, parents, and students regarding prevention and identification of sexual conduct. And that seemed like a rather broad charge that we had very recently enacted. But I was curious what thought has gone into the annual training for parents and students around this.
So, there is annual training around child abuse and recording procedures. There's video that's been in place for a number of years. It's on the website or has been. And it through employee, it's not just employee onboarding or orientation. It's annual training they do. And now, as you know, we do it through online safe schools, where before it was just strictly through Code of Conduct and what principals covered in the, in their pre-service meetings. But now, they have, there has to be a record that they have signed off on this, for that. Is it the kind of training that would really get to the heart of all of it? Probably not. You know, just that whole, you know, where do you put that? What are the resources toward that? Could there be more? Yes, I think there could be more.
Were there questions?
All right, we know it's important. And we are eager to join our neighbors in making sure that we've got the laws and procedures that we need to protect our kids. With that, we will move to our next agenda item, which is the ELD project team report.
Hi, good evening. Good evening, superintendent, superintendent writing and board members. My name is Toshica Marizio, administrator for multilingual programs. And I have here with me Karen Mullip, who is our elementary TOSA and also our DTOSA for this curriculum adoption work. We have Carolina Caveron. She is a teacher at VOS and also served on the project team as well as the cadre. And we have Rob Hillhouse here, who is our secondary TOSA, also involved in the project team and the cadre work. First of all, I'd like to thank Susan Greenberg for serving on our team, spending many, many hours with our project team and providing just excellent input throughout the process. Thank you. So, we are here this evening to request that you accept for review and consideration the recommendation put forth by the project team. So, the project team was charged to conduct a thorough curriculum review. And out of this review, the team developed in collaboration with the elementary, we had an elementary cadre team and a secondary cadre team, a position paper, which you have best practices and guiding principles, which were all included in the board packet. In addition, instructional resources for ELD instruction have been recommended and also included in the packet. And I just want to clarify that this is an ELD adoption and not, does not include dual language. So, it is a program model, but this is specifically for, for ELD. So, before we get to the recommendations, I wanted to provide an overview of the process. As you know, we are required by state federal law to have instructional materials that align to the new Common Core state standards as well as the new English-language proficiency standards. And then the last adoption for ELD was in 2007, and the new standards released in 2013. So, this provides urgency in getting materials that are aligned to the new standards in the hands of our ELD teachers. Now, given the increased rigor of both the Common Core state standards and the English-language proficiency standards, ELD teachers have to adjust and shift their practice to meet the demands of the new standards. Having these materials, resources, and professional development will definitely help teachers as they continue to transition from the old to the new standards. And I just kind of want to point out that the Jacob Wismer team, the administrators did an excellent job just showing how the OCS is very, very different than SPAC and just the increased demands of SPAC. As she was reading out the choices from OCS to, to SPAC, if you just picture your ELD students and how the increased language demands is, is hard for them as well. So, teachers definitely have to shift their practice and ELD teachers have to do that as well. And also, as you know, Beaverton is a fairly large district. In the context of ELD, there also exists diversity within the district in the types of program models that are implemented in the individual school settings. So, you've heard collaborative co-teaching, you've heard ELD pullouts, you have dual language. And with the program model study results that are in the horizon, uncertainty on which, you know, which models we will select as a district to implement, this did pose some problems for the cadre and project team. Selecting curriculum materials to meet the diversity of program models currently in existence was definitely a difficult task. However, we feel that the recommendations, the recommendation by the project team does a great job of providing the flexibility needed to satisfy all of the program models. Now, to focus our work, the cadre started to draft a position paper that really served as the anchor in the selection of materials and resources. You will see from this position paper that teachers and community feel strongly that, and I'm going to just read a quote here, "That meeting the diverse needs of multilabel learners requires a transformation in the way our district engages with and responds to our students. Stakeholders need to adopt a strength-based perspective, embrace collective responsibility, and implement and sustain professional development to support all district staff in their capacity to empower our multilingual learners." There was strong support from the teams that language acquisition occurs throughout a student's day, which means that all teachers are language teachers. And therefore, any professional development that we provide should be ongoing and should include all content teachers. Now, I know you don't want to listen to me all night, so, why, you know? So, I'm going to pass it on to Karen. Karen is going to talk a bit more about the best practices document as well as the elementary recommendations. And then Rob is going to talk about the secondary recommendations as well as our plan for professional development. And then Carolina is going to kind of put everything together and then share a bit about the process.
So going along with what Toshiko mentioned, we created this best practices document and intentionally, we didn't name it E L D best practices because the cadre felt really strongly that they didn't want best practices around what to, how to support our multilingual learners for that to be living just in the E L D class period. They wanted that to live throughout a student's day since kids are only with the E L D teacher for a small slice of their day. So it's organized into seven guiding principles that align to the position paper. And overall, what is clear is that the teaching and learning needs to be approached from a strengths-based perspective with the goal of implementing instructional practices that are designed to implement the structural barriers that adversely affect our multilingual students. And the guiding principles and best practices outline the steps toward meeting our promise of equitable outcomes. The recommendations put forth by the elementary team consist of themed unit collections that demonstrate the diversity within our students, collaboration with a third-party consulting company to do some unit planning and design, expanding our multilingual collections to support home language use, newcomer support and resources such as a collection of wordless and pattern books that promote oral language development and teaching guides and professional books.
Okay. Good evening, Board members. So the recommendations put forward by the secondary team are very similar to the elementary recommendations inasmuch as teachers told us they really would value a collection, a collection of texts that were both mirrors and doors, right? So the students can see themselves in the text in different ways, but also provide opportunities to travel somewhere new that they've not been before. So we don't just want to buy collections of books, however great those books should be, there needs to be instruction that wraps around those books and meets the students' needs where they're at. And so part of what we are proposing is a unit planning collaboration that will help our teachers craft lessons and units around the resources that we're providing. And that really gets to an important part, I think, of this adoption, which is we're using this as an opportunity not just to uplift our students, but to build a deep capacity in our E L D teachers and, and one that amplifies and goes beyond the E L D space and creates change school-wide, district-wide, system-wide. So in addition to those texts that I've just described and the time to plan, we're also looking at some professional books that we want to purchase. And I think something very exciting that's unique to our plan, I think you can be very proud of, is our support for our newcomer students. We have a secondary, a great need and a great mission and our teachers have a great heart for this group of students. Our teachers want to know that they are doing the right thing, making a difference, helping the student, in some cases, helping the student to identify a consonant, vowel consonant word, right? But the kids in the living grade are, is coming from a refugee camp. So we have to be really mindful that we're providing resources that empower that teacher and, and get the kids where they want to be going, even if their wife did have an interruption earlier, right? So very proud that we have that. Our professional development that wraps around all of it is really going to bring in presenters that we have already seen making a difference. The teachers are already telling us that what these presenters are offering, they'll be able to turn around quickly and see impacts in students. And one thing that we heard really clear was that we can't just, that we have to layer this and we have to mean it. And it has to be multi-year and has to be deep and it has to be ongoing. That this can't be something that we do and it was an S P D and we all had a good time and I got a book out of it. But it has to be something that actually makes a sustaining, powerful change. And I'm really proud because I think our plan that we're submitting tonight addresses that.
I think overall, it was a very comprehensive process that we went through. We allowed for a lot of voices to be heard. We heard from parents, from community members, from a board member, from administrators, teachers, and also students and parents. So we feel very confident that the materials, the resources, and the professional development that we are proposing and recommending to this board will serve the needs of all our students, but especially our multilingual students, and also hopefully be a positive impact on the student achievement that we're, that's the hope and the goal, right? And I think for, for me, being part of the project team and also the cadre as an elementary teacher, was very powerful because we focused our work on students. And I think that's why it took so long for, in the whole year, it was hard work, we came back and forth so much, but because we have the students in mind all the time. So, thank you.
Any questions?
Yes, Susan?
Well, I have to say, I really appreciate being part of this project team, even though I couldn't vote. And I think you just exuded it just now, why I was so proud to be on your team is that the passion that comes through each and every one of you and how you care about your, our students and our district, especially those that are probably the most vulnerable, and just the lens of equity. I also have to say that one of the exercises we did kind of early on also meant a lot to me where you gave us a story of a student and looking from the lens of a child that might have come from a different country and had a hardship in coming into a classroom and how difficult that is for that individual. So those are important lenses to look through and I just want to thank you for being so thoughtful.
Do you guys think the most important thing then is like professional development and the ongoing commitment to, you know, make sure you don't just give it up after one year, just keep on feeding it, developing? That's my question.
Yes, and that was loud and clear from both the cadre and the project team. And actually, our last vote with the project team, that was kind of the deciding factor really of if passing or not, is whether the professional development is going to be ongoing and that it was going to be available to all teachers and not just E L D teachers.
Because I know a lot of times we're concerned as whole Board members about like the budget for, and I just want to point out that there's a unique Title III budget dollars that can utilize for a lot of the P D for E L Ds, so I wanted to point that out.
Yeah, thanks for mentioning that. So when we were going over the budget and the recommendations from the, what was really, really essential to have in the hands of teachers when we start the year, we kind of went through which ones can be paid out of Title III grant funds and which ones have to be paid out of general fund. Because there are some requirements by law that we cannot use Title III funds, grant funds to pay for adoption because it is required by the state. And so we're being very, very diligent on, you know, which ones can be paid out of the grant and which ones can't. And so we can still filter through even some of the collections, some of the multicultural books, and possibly move some things over, but those are some things that we will have to recruit by the state.
Yeah, Tom?
I just want to thank you guys for all the hard work and of course, Susan, for being a part of that team. I'm excited by a lot of what I see here, but I'm going to pick three things out that I'm really excited about, just highlight them. One is viewing students' heritage language as a strength and not using that deficit model, but understanding that our students come to us with inherent strengths and recognizing that, that's awesome. The focus on social justice and advocacy and reflecting on systems, they contribute to inequality, how can we address those barriers? I think that's great. And then building that strong communication with our family and staff and creating that environment. So there's so much here that I'd want to say, but I'm just going to leave it to those three things and thank you guys for all your hard work.
Can I just have one question about, I just, in my head, and I am probably misguided, but I have a vision of what this looks like in terms of how materials are distributed at the elementary level. But then once it gets to secondary, it gets really fuzzy for me. So I was just curious if you could spend just a minute kind of talking about, I could see the materials, I could see they would have used, but I just wasn't sure, are they going to the science teacher, or the social studies teacher, or are they going to the English language arts teacher, or are they going to the, what does push-in look like at high school? Do we have such a thing, sort of the overlap? I just, I didn't understand.
So let me just give some context to the high schools. So, you know, we do have a variety of program models at the high school level. Secondary, most of the schools run an E L D class period, which is a specific period. So it is kind of like pullout. It shows up on the master schedule or on the student's schedule as a, as a class period just like math or, or science. And so the materials will definitely go to one per teacher or per school, depending on what the collection is. So that's how it'll be distributed. So a lot of the pricing that we do see here is by, is by school.
Yeah, and one thing I would add is that we're purchasing the newcomer resources, or proposing to purchase, sorry, the newcomer resources, one for each school site. Because one of the things we've seen this year is, I mean, I can take you, I can take you after, after summer, my schools, my studies in high schools, and we'll, we'll look at the newcomer experience in high schools. I'd be delighted to work with you. But we have newcomers all over big high schools, but one thing we've seen is that newcomers can appear, say, at an option school that has no prior experience of serving this kind of E L student as effectively as possible. And in those situations, that's, that's why you might look at this and say, well, you're buying one for Westview and you're buying one for Health and Science. But when the student is in your classroom and the student is literally at the beginning stages of literacy development, we want to avoid a situation where the student is not getting, we want to make sure the student gets what they need and we want to make sure that the teacher is, is able to use those resources strategically so that the student feels like they're making progress, so that we can get, if a kid was in a refugee camp, since they were eight years old and then they came to our district in ninth grade, we are legally required to hold a four-year graduation pathway for that student. We don't have this sense of urgency around this adoption. We have to provide our teachers with tools to help our kids achieve their dreams and to see that they've got a future in their community here.
Hi, yes, I'm a science specialist for the district and I work a lot of civil home back and I'm also part of the science cadre. And Susan sat in the, the E L D project team. So a lot of what we're seeing here, we're going to see it again on the science adoption that's coming out next. So they're using a lot of the best practices and the guiding principles and it's going to include that on their adoption and recommendations to the board. So with that, you see a lot of collaboration and a lot of things are already happening and already in place for the E L D students, the multilingual students to be successful and to help in the science and the content areas as well.
Thank you. Susan, any questions?
All right, thank you very much. We appreciate all of the work and thought and support for our students. We know it makes a difference. Board members, I'm sure you were wondering what the school working and what's doing in our agenda. It is there as a discussion item only if there were things that people thought, gosh, you know, I forgot that was in there, or we need to update that, or why, what else is missing. I mean, it was really just meant to be a reminder of these are the things that we have committed to each other and then an opportunity to update and, and put additional or subtractions in.
Good-looking document. Feels like yesterday.
All right. If there's, if you come up with something, let us know. But, but, end of discussion for tonight. Next on our agenda, there were four board policies in the agenda and there was a couple things that I wanted to introduce around those. The first is, these are the last of our go-through of our policy rewrite. And they are on as a first reading. The district staff, and I don't think I'm speaking too much for familiar to say, has an interest in depending on board input, perhaps adopting one or more of these, but in particular, K L tonight. If their board was just horrified at any of these, or, you know, they, they aren't in your packet for a second reading as well, as a way of giving public notice that we might take a vote on those. It is a process at the discretion of the board, depending on what discussion we had on these items. And so that is the framework, but first, before we do anything, we need some discussion. And so there's four, I just thought we'd go through them in the order that they're in the packet. So the first is J B, oh, and then the last, I know there were questions. The paper copies that some of you get, they had them on as only first reading. They have been on our publicly noticed agenda since Friday as potential for second reading as well, because I was wanting to be extremely transparent about the fact that we might, depending on discussion tonight. So, sorry for the confusion there. So with that, the first two policies were actually coming back to the board pending conversation that we had recently around how to best serve students, particularly those who have immigration status issues that might not feel supported by our district staff. And so this, these rewrites were in response to that. In addition, the equity policy is coming through as a first time.
Questions? Donna?
What questions? I just want to say thank you for putting the language in about immigration standard, status, so thank you.
Are there any other thoughts, comments? Yeah, Tom?
Just second what Donna said. It's appreciated.
I will say, it was a really interesting discussion for us to go dig in and also for us to make them be consistent with each other. So I want to thank staff for that work as well. Okay, so that's J B and J B B. Any further discussion on those two? Okay. Policy J C is next alphabetically. Okay, and I am looking at the post. Questions, comments? Yeah, Donna?
I just wanted some, you know, clarification. I know we changed the Shell to the May, so I'm making an assumption here. You guys can correct me because you're always good at doing that. So anyway, I'm assuming the May was because, as I know, not every district, I mean, not every zone is the same, not every, I should say, attendance area is the same. And so while one criteria might bubble up to the top for one area, probably a different one will bubble up to the top from a different one. So was that the logic behind the May? That's clarification.
That is in fact it.
I got it right this week. And also, and also the fact that not all of the boundary decisions we make are done the same. How we did the high school boundary was, was very different than how we did the elementary. So we're not going to say every single time you have to go through this sort of step because it's, it's going to be different. So that's why we came up with Shell instead of May. May, I really have a problem with those two.
So I don't want to can of worms here, but my, my question is about transparency. I mean, it's, it's not really spelled out here and it can be interpreted in different ways with different leadership. And so I don't know if there's some way of integrating that in there in some way so that it's understood that, you know, we have a transparent process from the beginning where everything's communicated out, that it might even be a school board member that isn't a non-voting member on a, if there is a boundary change similar to the high school change, that a school board member might be on that committee, not as a voting member, but just as a listening person?
I guess probably getting down to the weeds, sort of along those lines. I know we had issues before because we had, well, I guess going back to the high school boundary process.
Times.
We had, we, yeah. We had, we, sometimes a committee wasn't liked and therefore they, not all the deliberations were heard by everybody in the room. And so there was a lot of confusion there. I'm not, I might be getting down to the weeds, so I don't know if that belongs in an A R or if that's something that should be. But I mean, just thinking about those processes that we learned the last time and how the elementary school process seemed a lot more transparent, a lot more involved than the high school.
Yeah, and I do know that A Rs are something that are being worked on and I know that following the elementary process... follow the elementary process, I just have the strong recommendation, we really need to document the things that were better, recognizing that there's always learning that could happen. Susan, I know that the effort, and in fact, this line has come through both, you know, prior versions of JC and then this current one, the district committed to a boundary adjustment process that is transparent, collaborative, and inclusive, is the attempt to put in at a policy level rather than just spell out what exactly transparent means, and then the public involvement plan associated with that, a few other paragraphs down.
Yeah, I just feel like this, I appreciate that. I just want to emphasize that because any of the last.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so I want to, so for sure, we're updating the AR. My fellow policy committee members, I want to apologize, but I'm noticing that I'm actually working off of somewhat back-level language. This, this language, in some cases, some factors may outweigh others, actually did not make it through committee, which I can say with confidence because David Williams is in Hawaii. And so, yeah, go ahead.
As chair of the policy committee, and with, I mean, we have been talking about this for 18 months. It sounds like we still need more discussion, and I think what came through this evening is board members that were not on the policy committee have things that they would like to see. So I would like to see us have just the first reading of this tonight and bring this back to the policy committee, make sure it's clean, and make sure that we know why we put it together the way it did, because it is pointed out. We are going to be going through another boundary adjustment very soon, and we have to earn back with our constituents that we have addressed this, and I know it's just words, it's our actions that are going to be stronger than our words, but the first thing that is our policy is where we stand as a board. So I would like, as the policy chair, to just bring this up as a first reading, get your input, and bring it back to the policy committee that will be established this next.
Well, I support having first reading tonight, obviously, since I'm the one who actually brought up the text changes that came through, and, but I would very much like to know what other questions people have, so that we're not trying to guess what concerns people have, because we will, you know, nobody wants, we, we have spent a lot of time. Yeah, Lea?
I, I had a little trouble because we deleted and wrote a whole new one, and it wasn't a line-by-line, so bear with me if I miss something.
Right, and we have struggled.
The, in the deletion, things that were left out in the proposed, I want to make sure that it was conscious, and would love to hear the reading. Transportation cost was not one of those criteria that made it into the proposed.
Can we take a more about one?
Sure.
That would be helpful. That one, as a committee, we, we did discuss that, and actually I'll lump safety in because that could be coming next. We really felt like as a committee that there was value in limiting the number but making them be the most meaningful. So we really believed that neighborhood proximity and accessibility captured the essence of what those two were trying to get at, rather than listing them as separate line items. So I think that's a discussion for the board as a whole as well, but that was the intent that we. Clarify question with that. So, yeah, the AR that's going to be connected with that would expand on that to talk about transportation, per se, the cost of transportation, or not necessarily? And I would say not necessarily. I also would say that any board starting a boundary adjustment process in the future could choose to specifically call out transportation costs as a specific factor to address, but it's not mandated by this policy.
I, I would just input, and I don't know how I feel because I'll have to think about it a little bit more, on transportation costs, I don't see that as neighborhood proximity because there's a cost versus a feel-good about your community and your culture that's around the neighborhood. Now, I don't look at that criteria so much through the eyes of budget, maybe I would, but right now I really see those as kind of two separate things. And I'm okay with limiting. I, I agree, we need to come up with what, the ones that we think are the most important, and it gets really complicated when there's a lot of those, most important. So I appreciate that process, and I like having time to think about it. The only other one that seemed was staffing patterns, and I was never really sure what that meant anyway.
Yeah, us either, so.
Yeah.
Okay. If they couldn't be measured, then we knew those were, maybe had ones to question. Yeah, Tom?
For me, because, I mean, a new wish, this is actually my, my one year here, so I can't say that much longer. I want a little time to digest it, because I haven't actually been through the process like everybody else here, and I'm struggling with trying to understand objectives and factors. And I'm trying to understand, you know, I see that the objectives come in front of the board, but not the factors, and I'm trying to understand why that is. I can think of a bunch of different things in different ways, but I feel like I need some time to process, maybe have some conversations, and educate myself better so that when we come to a second reading, I'll be able to understand exactly what's in front of me.
I, I think having a cleaned-up copy will really help you out, too, just because I, I believe the objectives are supposed to be measures of the factors, but I'm working off of a memory bank instead of.
Okay, so in that situation, the objectives would cover the factors? Okay, okay. And that's where maybe seeing, like, for me, just seeing how that was done last time, what that document looked like, what came before the board, things like, okay, well.
I'm teasing you, of course, and it's easy for us to get for you.
Yeah, I don't think, I, I, there's no one specific thing that I have questions.
Yeah, we'll catch you back.
I also think what we were trying to avoid, and there are pluses and minuses to this, but what we found through that last process is there, unlike so many other things like a court law, you have a definition of terms. This is what this means. These things were listed here, we had seven different people that had a different definition of what that meant. So it was, it was not something that was measurable because we all had a different definition. Now, if we sit there and spend all the time in defining every single, what every single word meant there, we wouldn't even have to have, like, a committee or anything else. We could just throw those factors in there, see, and then spit something out. So that's what came through in all of our discussions over and over again, is so many of these things that we were looking at is, do you know, do you know what that means? No, do you know, what's your definition? And we found out that, so it was easier for us, as we come up to that next boundary process, what are, what shall we be judging that on? And, and again, taking into account not just what these seven people right here think now, or what this superintendent, but what, what this document can become as we go to the next, the next. And hopefully we're not, you know, having to do this every two or three years.
All right, were there other things that people wanted more information or background on? Okay. We will continue the discussion on JC. Thank you for your careful attention to that.
I'll just say one more thing if I can.
Please do.
Just, one of the most important things, I think this board as a whole agrees, is that we want transparency. So however you can build that in to the rewriting or the corrections or whatever you're going to do with it, that would be a key thing for me.
And we're open to suggestions.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I have, I have some ideas, but I will.
Yeah, I have one question, too. Like, I heard tonight, and I've heard from people like in Intel and whatnot, but, you know, a lot of people like the data that we use to make decisions. I'm not sure if that can be wrapped into, like, a policy, but, you know, a third party, because like, you know, you're allowed to say, and then you suggested this, and we said, no, I suggested that, and, you know, we heard it again today, and I've heard it before, so.
Yeah.
I'm not sure how to wrap that into a policy, but it'd be valuable, because that's part of transparency, you know?
Absolutely. Okay. Is there anything else people want to bring up on? Okay. And then the, the last one for tonight is policy KL, which has been, in fact, Claire, I'll let you give the intro to that, just because it's not necessarily something that doesn't, it wasn't an R interest necessarily. So KL has been an evolution. You guys have seen this one before, used several times in the last year, and some of it has been trying to respond to changes that came to us from ODE and some specifics that were put into the Oregon Administrative Rules around how many steps can we have in a process when a parent or constituent complains about a particular issue, and what does that need to look like? The OAR prescribed for a certain timelines, and, and again, how many steps in our process. And so one of the things you'll notice in, in this rewrite is that there are now only four steps in the process. That's driven entirely by Oregon law, that we can't have more than four steps for an individual to have to go through in their process. And we've also gone through and tried to make more consistent the timelines so that they also adhere to the timelines that are set forward in that OAR. In addition to this, staff has been doing a lot of collaborating and talking about what the AR can and should look like, so that it defines the, the actual nuts and bolts of the process a lot better. What does a hearing look like, an appeal, and all those different layers, and what kind of form must people use to lodge a complaint? And so we're trying to collaborate a lot on how to make that the most user-friendly approach for our folks that are out there wanting to access these processes, and, and don't put people through a bunch of different hoops. You know, you go up one chain, oh, nope, you need to go over here now, and go through six more layers on that side, something that really provides us with a very transparent and user-friendly approach to all the different types of complaints that we get on, I'd say, monthly, daily, weekly basis. Yeah.
Just have a quick question. Just want to know, so do you know where you're going to have the ARs ready? I mean, it seems like that's important. Is it something that's on the fast track or not?
David and I have actually, we've written up the AR, and we hope to have the AR in place pretty much on the, on the tail end of this going through and passing. So, and then we need to do a bit of training with folks around the AR, because there's going to be some pieces in there that might be slightly different from what we've done in the past, but making sure that we really adhere to that format and the documentation is really critical to us resolving complaints and having a good process for, for all the folks that are involved.
Well, I'm sure that the board would welcome seeing a copy of it, since sometimes we do get contacted, so.
Well, and actually, all, all the ARs as they are being finished are being pushed through the board packet, for your information. Are there any other questions, concerns, comments about KL? Okay. That ends our first reading on those four policies. Thank you for your careful attention to that. Next agenda item for us tonight is the adoption of the 2018-19 budget. I want to thank board members for their participation with our budget committee, and Claire and her staff for its preparation as well. I know we've had a lot of series of meetings on this topic already. Is there any further discussion that people would like to have? Claire, do we need the full resolution read?
No, just the, what's there on the motions. I move that we approve Resolution 18-0618, adopting the budget and making appropriations and imposing taxes as presented in the board report.
I second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Are there any opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Thank you. I'm so glad that we have a budget going for it. That'd be great. Okay, and then next we have the approval of the multi-year finance plan and calendar for next year. This should look familiar to everybody.
I move that we approve the multi-year finance plan slash budget calendar for 2018-20.
I second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Thank you, Claire. Next, we'd like to invite Brian, who's got the bond accountability committee report. Trying to do if anything that you wanted to share, or for board member questions?
No, I think the report accurately conveys the conversation at the accountability committee, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Were there questions for Brian? Yeah, Lea?
I understand the recommendation that we'll be acting on tonight. I just wanted to know, why now? Why, what is the push, rather than waiting till we get a little further down the line to ensure that we've considered as a board all the priorities or where we might fall short? What's, I just.
I think there were two different factors that contributed to the committee's comfort with that recommendation. The first was that most of the large projects are either in progress or are close to having prices relatively fixed, or at least staff knows what that price range was going to be. So the, the risk to the program was significantly less at this point in time than it was when the program started several years ago. So that was the first factor. And the second factor was, when we thought about the criteria we would recommend to the board using to fund additional projects out of the program to serve, clearly, anything safety-related would rise to the top of the list. And given the public conversation around school safety, we felt like it was a very appropriate time to make that recommendation, and the committee unanimously supported that, given that we were in a position where, number one, we could do it without, we felt risking delivering on the commitments that the board promised to the voters, and two, that that level of funding would bring all schools up to the same standard, and that it was very important for the district to be able to meet that standard consistently and equitably across the district.
So related to that, I wanted just to clarify, tonight the board is being asked to approve reserve funds allocated for just two things. One is seismic upgrades, and then the other is for some of the proposed security improvements. One is to complete work that was promised as part of the original bond program, and then the second, which is $2 million, is for the additional work on the door locks for classrooms. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, Donna?
So I was just wondering if there's been any discussion about maybe the impact of our budget, depending on how the tariff situation goes, and maybe about, you know, steel and aluminum, and how that might play in our future construction. So I don't know if you've been talking about that, you know, discussing how that might impact the overall project as we move forward.
So as we, as we prepared the report and put this together, the estimate of completion that we gave to you, we took those factors into consideration. There's always risk in those programs as well, but we tried to, again, as we're projecting out over the next three years of, of this bond program, to make sure that we had significant amounts of contingency built into our estimates to, to overcome those factors as well. Is it perfect? Can we guarantee that? No. But again, as Brian said, Hazel Dell is approaching completion, William Walker has been awarded, we're moving forward, Akma, we're getting into good pricing data as we go forward, and then, of course, Raleigh Hills is the other one that we're working on as well. So at this point, we, we do feel like our, our confidence in those factors are coming together, as well as, as I told you last time, for the first time, we scoped out the maintenance project and, and have a good feel for what the 98 million actually costs.
Yeah, Tom?
I just want to thank you for bringing this before us. I think the seismic upgrades and the security upgrades are really important work, and I appreciate the committee spending the time to prioritize that and put it in front of us right now. Keeping our kids safe is always a huge priority for me, so thank you.
I have one comment, too.
Yeah, Eric, and then Donna?
I think there's a healthy, for Leanne's questions, too, there's a healthy commentary on, you know, what should be, you know, maybe moved up the priority list. And then the BAC is already starting to work on prioritization, and the waiting for, like, safety projects always brings it up to the top. So, you know, on the money, on the funding, on those things, those things would rise to the top of any project that would be done in the future, so.
So I guess, I know that there's a lot of issues around the school district, because we do hear about them, like, some of the teachers that have to lock their doors from the outside. So I'm assuming that this additional 4 million, is that going to take care of the lion's share of the things we hear about? Or what percentage is that going to take care of? Additional items that were not part of the original bond project list?
Right, so the, the 4 million is to, that, that is added to the 10 million project, which is to get the perimeter security that we started as well. So, as you remember, that 10 million was thrown into the bond as a, a, just an idea we wanted to spend money on, security. But as we come to that standard realization, is that's a $14 million bill as well. So we're, that 4 million is to continue that piece. The additional 2 million is to allow us to put push-button locks in every classroom in the district. And just, just for the security project we have, we started with the elementary, and we've been working our way up. So our intention is to start at the high school level and work back down on those push-button locks. Aloha is the first one that we're planning to go into.
Yeah, Becky?
Brian, I believe this is your last meeting as Chair of our BAC, and I want to thank you for your service. I know it's not always been easy, especially hard when you're dealing with so many members of the community that come from all different backgrounds, and I just want to thank you for, for serving in this role and providing such great expertise in an area that not all of us have a lot of expertise in. So thank you.
Thank you.
You can still come to our meetings, too. And I'm, as well as the BAC, I'm sure you'll be, continue to be an active part there.
Not off the hook.
Yeah, not at all. All right. Is there any further questions on this action item? All right. Is there someone who'd like to make a motion?
I move that we approve the 2014 Capital Construction Bond Program Reserve Fund to be allocated as follows. 5.45 million budget increase to seismic upgrades, 4 million budget increase to security upgrades, and 2 million for additional safety and security enhancements.
I second.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Are there any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Looking forward to this working, Sergeant Riker, right?
Oh, okay, okay.
All right. Next, next on our agenda, we have the superintendent's contract up for approval. Following a successful evaluation, the board would like to enter into a new three-year contract with the superintendent. I believe board members have had the opportunity to review. Is there any further discussion?
I move that we approve, or should say renew, or approve, the next three-year term for Superintendent Don Brown.
I second. So any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Are there any opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. And then, next up on our agenda, we will be doing the nominations for next school year's board chair and vice chair. So for this process, first, I will open the nominations for board chair. Leanne?
I'd like to nominate Becky Timchuck. She's served as our vice chair for two years. She chaired the local option levy successfully. She has served and led many of our subcommittees on our board. In my mind, she's proven herself to be a valuable asset and a great leader on our board. And with all that in mind, I have to add, too, she's a fun partner in crime. And with all that in mind, I nominate Becky Timchuck for the position of chair.
I second. Are there any other nominations? All right, well, we don't have to vote, but we will. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Are there any opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Becky. And then, I'd like to, to open the nominations for board vice chair. Yeah, Tom?
I'd like to nominate Eric for board vice chair. I really appreciate his positive spirit on the board, his push for achievement, and his keen eye for data. Serving on the board with Eric has been a pleasure the whole time. He keeps it fun. He's a great guy. And also, your deep community connections. You know a lot of folks around here, and your parents taught in this district, so I think you'd be a great board vice chair, and looking forward to voting for you in a couple seconds.
Is there further discussion? Susan, do you have anything you wanted to add?
I do.
Does that mean we're going to have more cookies at our...
I just want to add that, you know, I want to make sure everybody knows that Eric is a product of the BSD system, Rock Creek, Meadow Park, Sunset High School. And then he has been volunteering for, I don't know, 21 seasons is 21 years, but for Sunset High School track team, he's very dedicated to the kids in our school district, and he's also been part of the budget committee, and of course, the BAC has been part of that, and obviously, very integral there. And I'm also excited to have Eric be our coach here, or vice chair.
Oh, I second the motion.
Is there any other nominations? All right, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Are there any opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Okay, and then, next up on our agenda, we have a second reading for our school board policies, JB, JBB, and KL.
I move that we pass, is it, isn't it IGBI? JB?
I think IGBI is in the consent agenda, but we could pull it...
Oh, I'm sorry.
I think you have your own agenda.
Okay, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna move that we do IGBI, JB, JBB, and KL. I second.
All right, is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Are there any opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Thank, did you guys vote? All right, fantastic. And then, we have our consent agenda.
I move that we approve the consent agenda. I second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Are there any opposed? The motion passes unanimously. There's time for board member comments. Donna?
Very, very quick. I wanted to let you know, I went to ISB's graduation. 72 out of the 77 graduates got an IB diploma. Secondly, our dear Megan Buchanan, who was on the student advisory committee, was a valedictorian at Aloha High School. That's all I'm going to say.
Tom?
Keep it quick, but I just wanted to thank former Chair Brian for all of her service to the board.
Actually, you're stuck till June 30th. Through June 30th at midnight, I will still be answering.
Chair-elect, you're Chair Emeritus. No, I, I wanted to thank you for your service, and I've learned a lot about understanding deeply the district's issues. I appreciate how you always bring us to consensus, your insight into systems, and how they continually can be approved, and your long-term thinking. Like I said, I've learned a lot, and I appreciate the service, and how many hours that you put in to being able to help lead us, and it doesn't go unnoticed.
Becky, did you have something?
Just, just a couple things, because I know we've all been doing, but I got to attend the first AP graduation, and that was a great, a great sight, and it was, it was really wonderful. Also, Tom and I attended a powwow at South Ridge High School. It was a very warm day, but just a great way to showcase some of the different things that we have going on in our district, and the district staff should be really thanked, especially to Shiko. It was, it was very well-attended for the very first time of, of coming back, so that was, that was great. And whenever I need to be reminded of the good things, that I got to go to the Highland end of the year, jazz concert was outside, and, and under the stars, it was wonderful, and they handed out great awards, and I, it just brings a smile to your face, all the work that we do, it's just great to see kids so engaged and loving what they are doing. And so, those, like I said, I know we're all gotten to do graduations, and I thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to lead this group. I have immense respect for all of you, and working with the staff. And you have been a wonderful teacher, but don't, you, I've got very big shoes to fill, and I accept that, and I hope to be learning all the time, but I thank you for your confidence, and it's a, it's an honor to represent the Beaverton School District. Thank you very much, and if the levy hadn't passed, I was going straight out the door.
All right, so, yeah, we're not done yet, are we? Okay. I had just a couple of thank yous on our quick way out, and a couple of announcements. One, board members, I want you to know, because I'm not sure that you got sent this email, but we did put our 360 evaluation of ourselves out in the field this weekend. So those of you who have been invited to respond, please do so. The way we learn is by getting authentic feedback, and so we ask that people respond that to you. As this board members, you'll probably get your own homework, but take the summer off first. But for those who are community members, we, we do try to get that out while it's fresh in the middle of the school. We have, we've gotten everything that happened this school year. So that did go out last weekend. I did want to publicly thank Steve Langford for getting graduation and graduation events out live-stream. It really did mean, well, I hope you pass it on. It really did mean a lot to an awful lot of people that that was available. And as Becky was mentioning, going out the door, I, the other thankful, thank I had is to a couple people who weren't here, who aren't here. It's such a privilege to work with Mary and with Linda. And so, I'm glad I didn't scare Becky away, that she is still on the board. Working with those other two, it was really good to learn with them, and then to learn with each of you. So thank you for being patient with me, and for learning together. I'm glad we get to keep doing it. Can't wait to come to my hoodie and cause problems. Slouching in the back. I also have, and I know I've said this before, but the, the strength of a volunteer group such as the school board is really what, is because everybody comes together, puts their war in, and I really appreciate that we have been able to do that together. There's also great strength in the fact that we all take turns doing different things. I've had the privilege to work with Becky on the policy committee this year, and admire the work that she's done with the local option levy. And then, I served with Eric on not only the planning committee, but also the audit committee, which, you know, if anybody else wants to take those jobs, you know, they're, they're available, but it has been a pleasure to, to do that with him as well. And he definitely keeps us on task and focused on what's the best thing that we should be doing for our kids. So I know that the board is in good hands, because there are seven good people up here who are both a foot in the time, so thank you for that. And we are not going to adjourn, because we are going to go into executive session and send everybody home except for us.